Good evening.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 27th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign-up sheets in the foyer for our hearing this evening. One is the sign-up sheet if you're speaking, and the other is a sign-up sheet just for the attendees of these hearings. In case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding these cases, please sign up on one of these sheets. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record this evening. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take an oath. And I ask you, anybody that comes up, and the board members, everybody speak close to the microphones this evening. And thank you for your cooperation. Also, silence your cell phones if you have a chance, please. On our agenda this evening, after a review and approval of the March 13th minutes, our first discussion item this evening will be text number 22-0270 for Stewart's Grant Minor PUD Amendment. Following that, our public hearing this evening is CSP 22-0269 for the Stewart's Grant Planned Urban Development. Following that, any new business followed by adjournment. This time, I'll let the board members introduce themselves, starting with Mr. Brown.
John Brown.
Kim Summers.
Joe St. Clair.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe Fazekas.
Merle Evans.
Okay. Also with us this evening, with our county staff, with Land Use and Growth Management, we have their acting director, Ms. Courtney Jenkins. Their senior administrative coordinator is Jessica Birch, and their planner this evening is Larry Everhart. Also with us from the county, we have Buffy Giddens, who is the deputy county attorney. Our assistant county attorney is Mr. John Hauser. The director of Public Works and Transportation, Mr. Jim Gotch, and also with him is Jesse Harper. Kristi Hollander is from St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission. Anna Wells also is from the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission. From the Patuxent River Naval Air Station Community Planning Liaison's office, Alec Young. We also have Casey Guidry is from the Department of Economic Development. Kim Howell is here from St. Mary's County Public Schools. And Amy Carter is our video media producer this evening, a very important person to us. Did everybody get a chance to review those minutes? Any corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
We have a motion from Mr. Fazekas. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, and I have a second from Ms. Summers. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving right along. First case of the evening would be the Stewart's Grant PUD. Before we get started on that, if there's anybody that will be testifying on the first case this evening, the discussion, if you'd stand at this time, and I'll get everybody sworn in. And because there's so many people, if you come up to the microphone this evening, I am going to ask you again if I had a chance to swear you in. Do you raise your right hand? Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Thank you all.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Chair, vice chair, Planning Commission members. Agenda item one is a minor PUD amendment, text 22-0270 for the Stewart's Grant PUD. The minor PUD amendment seeks approval to reduce the number of dwelling units contemplated in the original PUD from 1,622 to 1,122, corresponding reduction in the phasing plan to an average of 100 homes per year, an increase in open space, amend the requirement that on-street parallel parking is to be provided, and adds parcels 39, which is approximately 16 acres, and parcel 75, which is approximately 1.52 acres to the PUD. The site is located off of Great Mills Road in Great Mills. The land uses are mixed-use medium intensity, residential high density, and residential medium density. The zonings are medium intensity, mixed use, residential high density, and residential medium density, with a PUD R and PUD CP overlay. The minor PUD amendment was submitted for review and distributed to the applicable TEC agencies on October 17th, 2022. And this concludes the staff report and has entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit two. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions, the staff?
Okay, thank you. And I know Mr. John Hauser was going to get up and address the Planning Commission next.
Good evening, Commission members. As you know, we, given the complexity of planned unit developments, the relative rarity with which the Planning Commission deals with them, and the procedural posture of this particular PUD that's before you all tonight, Department of Land Use and Growth Management, the county attorney's office, thought it would behoove us, and behoove you, and behoove the members of the public as well, who would look up the information online and see it themselves, that to generate a memorandum that would summarize what planned unit developments are, how they are approved, what reviews and standards those reviews are conducted under once a development plan is issued, and then ultimately, what are the two things the Planning Commission has before them tonight, and how does this concept site plan approval work, and what makes it different than other concept site plan approvals? That is going to take up, I think, a minor part of my presentation tonight, the majority of which I'm sure is going to be taken up by questions from Planning Commission about what all of it means. To summarize the memorandum in broad strokes, planned unit developments are the easiest and quickest gloss I can give on them, are special zoning areas in which a planned unit is created, usually over a long and arduous process, as this one was back in 1997, ultimately approved and put in place by the county commissioners. And once that PUD is created, it creates a special zoning district for the area of that PUD. And the special zoning district allows for certain other provisions of the comprehensive zoning ordinance to be relaxed, strengthened, or altered to meet the particular vision that a developer has brought forth for that planned unit development. Planned unit developments do not necessarily have to address every question that's out there about a development. But what is in a development plan, the things that are addressed by a development plan are binding and will prevail over conflicting or differing provision of the comprehensive zoning ordinance. The developing, the development plan becomes law and part of the ordinance that the commissioners create, adopt, creating a PUD, and that gives it the force of statutory authority here in St. Mary's County that puts it on equal footing with the comprehensive zoning ordinance. And again, unless it's not addressed in the planned unit developments, development plan, the comprehensive zoning ordinance provisions do not control development within that planned unit development. What you have before you tonight are two things. The first thing that's going to be up is a minor text amendment to the planned unit developments, development plan. Major amendments to a planned unit development that change density, that change the other specifically delineated factors in that section that goes into what constitutes major amendments are subject to a hearing before the Planning Commission, but ultimately come down to a vote to the county commissioners of whether or not that major amendment should be made. Minor amendments are defined as anything that is not in that list of what counts as a major amendment and are voted upon by the Planning Commission. The board of county commissioners do not weigh in on minor amendments. The four things that are brought before the Planning Commission tonight as far as amendments to the development plan, the annexation of the additional parcels, the elimination of off-street parking requirements, the decrease in the overall number of units that will be part of this plan, and the decrease in the amount of projected homes to be built each year during the build-out of this plan, those are all been determined by staff to be minor amendments and are not subject to the major amendment process because of that and can be voted upon tonight by the Planning Commission without referral necessary to the county commissioners. The other thing that's in front of the Planning Commission tonight is a concept site plan. And I'm going to preface this by saying that there's disagreement between county staff and the office of the county attorney and the developer over what jurisdiction the Planning Commission has right now. Because of what I said earlier, that planned unit developments are creatures of the approving ordinance that creates them, that the provisions and the strictures of that approving ordinance are what control a development, further development within a PUD, that sometimes the language is not always clear, sometimes, particularly in a case like this one, where we're not only, there's been a lapse of time, but we're under a whole new comprehensive zoning ordinance. And what we had at the time this was passed, that leaves some confusion over what the particular process is going to follow. And no PUD is the same. Everything comes down to ultimately what the approving ordinance is, and particularly where you have PUDs that come from different eras or different generations, the rules governing development in each control. What staff's opinion of the proper way to go about the concept site plan tonight is that the approving ordinance, the CZO in place at the time the approving ordinance came down in 1997, as well as the current CZO, both require that when there's further, in our opinion, that when there's further development within the PUD, that that has to follow the typical strictures, procedures, and rules of Article 6 now, which relates to general site plan approval. That is the familiar concept site plan, major site plan approval that we are typically accustomed to. The only difference is that when we go into Article 60 and look in for design standards, is that any design standards that are provided for in the development plan are going to trump and supersede whatever is in the current CZO as it is written now. As far as review for adequate public facilities goes, that is part of standard concept site plan approval. It's our opinion that is what the Planning Commission has the authority to do tonight. The only thing that would make this different from typical concept site plan, controlling for everything set up to point, is the provision of COB, the comprehensive zoning ordinance is Section 70.14 for ground fathering, which says as far as adequate public facilities go with respect to schools, and only schools, is that if a planned unit development had an approved APF finding prior to 2008, that schools are not part of the review for adequate public facilities during the concept site plan or the major site plan approval. So it's our opinion that that is grandfathered in under normal concept site plan approval. That is not to say that schools won't be looked at at all during this development. When this ordinance was passed back in 1997, there was a provision inserted into that ordinance that is binding law, in the county's opinion, that specific analysis and findings of adequate public facilities need to be made by, originally the Planning Commission, then an amendment in 2004 transferred that authority from the Planning Commission to the Director of Land Use and Growth Management, that there still needs to be an APF finding for subsequent development in this particular PUD. That's the language of the ordinance. Only difference is that that will affect schools. School APF does need to be met at the time of those subsequent developments. It's just not something that we think is before the Planning Commission tonight, and it's something that the director is going to have to make similar to how major site plans work under our current CZO, that they will make at the time of final site plan approval. I said there's disagreement between the county attorney's office and the developer on that. The developer maintains that concept site plan approval as provided for in our CZO and as we envision it isn't properly a part of this process, that when the development plan was laid out in 1997 and that ordinance passed, that that was the equivalent of the concept site plan, and that the Planning Commission's only remit, if any, is to look for conformity with that development plan. Again, we have a matter of disagreement over whether an APF finding is a part of that or not. The developer is going to go forward to tonight as though this were a normal public hearing, but is not waiving any right to challenge the jurisdiction of that ground in the future. And the county, and we're saying for the record, isn't going to hold that against them either, that if it turns out we did make the wrong call, if we are incorrect and the judge would tell us otherwise, but for the fact that by going forward tonight, they are waiving the right to make that argument, we're waiving that. We're just saying if we did make the wrong call tonight, that's what a judge would decide or the Board of Appeals. It is what it is.
So John, let me ask you a question.
Yes, Mr. Van Kirk.
Related to that, before it gets too far. So the developer is saying that APF is not part of this concept plan?
So the developer isn't saying that APF isn't part of the concept site plan. The developer, I think, and I'm not going to put too many words in Mr. Wyler's mouth, he's very capable, much better at I than doing that, but my understanding of their position is that concept site plan approval is not part of the process.
Because to them, it was already granted in 1997?
Because to them, the development plan was approved amidst much sound and fury, stermin drawng in 1997 over the course of about six, seven months' worth of meetings in the Planning Commission, that extractions were made, or extractions were made of the developer then, and they think that is binding.
This is probably not a question for you, but when you say extractions were made, you're talking about proffers?
Not only proffers, but, well, partly, that there were agreements they made, that there would be the facilities they laid out, the improvements they said would be made, that that was all done. But there's also something important to keep in mind in this project, is that there was, we can call it a donation of land, we can call it, I think perhaps more accurately, land that was offered to the Board of Education in return for the granting of the PUD. Roughly 40-some acres have already been donated by the developer to the Board of Education in furtherance to achieve the PUD and the amendment to the PUD in 2004. The site of George Washington Carver Elementary was donated by the developer in 2004. Prior to that, in 1997, roughly 12 acres were donated that are now part of the Great Mills High School site. That has already been made, again, and that was a concession, a exaction that was made in return for getting the PUD back at that time.
I'm a little confused. I understand all that, going back to a little bit of what you said about, I think, most PUDs and subdivisions. There's a couple of differences between a lot of concept plans, the planning director has the authority of APF, and when I think subdivisions and PUDs, the Planning Commission usually has as that, I think. And I guess when the amendment was done in 2004 to include the donation for where Carver, the new school is, I wonder why that was, and I know you wasn't here, Ms. Jenkins wasn't here, why that was added as a part of that amendment to give that authority on the PUD to one person versus seven? It does not seem...
And I wish I could provide an answer to that.
No, I understand that you're not going to be able to answer that.
No, I understand. And one of the things is that major amendment process is not as involved, there are not as many steps as there are for the development plan itself. We're also benefiting from a wealth of meetings that the Planning Commission held back when the development plan was first enacted in 1997. Those meetings all have minutes, which are very detailed, in about, I think, six or seven working sessions, and I believe about two or three public hearings back in that process to get us to the development plan. So I'll address that. There's not a similar that I know of, wealth of documentary evidence to tell us what everybody was thinking at the time.
Right.
All I know is that there's a very clear line in that '04 amendment that says, "Strike Planning Commission and replace with Director of Land Use and Growth Management."
Right. Let me ask one more question. It was going to be to you or Ms. Jenkins, as I had some staff questions written down. Where does it say that staff is the determining factor on deciding whether it's a major amendment or a minor amendment? Since, and the reason I ask that is because in either case, one of the documents provided by Ms. Jenkins or yourself says that if it's a major, it's still looked at by the Planning Commission and then referred to the commissioners, and if it's a minor, it's looked at by the Planning Commission, and we make the determination. It looks to me like if either one of them was going to be Planning Commission-based, we would be the ones deciding if it was going to be a minor or a major amendment. So where does it say that, I mean, since the process has to be looked at either way by the Planning Commission, and either approved, denied, or major, referred to the commissioners for a vote, where does it state that, that that's the staff's part of this?
So I think where we're at on that is that the definitions for what is a major and minor amendment aren't discretionary. It's a definition, either it fits that or it's not. And there's always calls on the materials that are brought before the Planning Commission of what things are. On the Board of Appeals, it's always a question of, we've got to decide, all right, is an appeal of an administrative variant, is it a question for an administrative appeal or not, is there a final determination? Was there, if it's a case of variance, it's what is the code section the variance is for, and we put things like that. I go to the Board of Appeals just because as far as staff's role in trying to, what we label the things that come before you, that's just offering a plethora of things for me to pull from. As far as who makes the determining factor, I wouldn't say it's really staff, it's just a question of what are those five or six things that are in the major amendment, and are they defined? If they're not, if they're in that list, it's a major amendment. If not, it's a minor. And I suppose the only room for discretion thinking about this for a moment, you know, I'm one of those people who talks until I know what I want to say, so the thought has come to me during all of that, is that there is the question for, if an amendment changes the nature or intent of the development plan, that is a major site plan. So if one of those non-listed things is so significant and of such import to the overall project that we could fairly say that it changes the nature and intent of the whole plan, sure, major amendment. I don't think, given the scope of the amendments they are offering, which are a reduction in the number of houses, which are a reduction in the number of houses that are going to be built each year, and are the addition of a total number of acres to the parcel that will more or less bring us even to where we were before land was taken out of the PUD to be donated for the schools, I don't think those approach the level of changing the nature or intent of the PUD.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Right, Mr. Hauser. So reducing or eliminating the requirement that the county specified for orange street parking is not changing the nature or intent of the long-range plan in that we're developing in a development district? And that's where my biggest issue is right now, is that it sounds to me that a huge part of this development is the number of parking spaces that can be available. I live in Cedar Cove. I live in a townhouse. The developer provided one garage space. Most of my neighbors are military, and they use that garage space for their stuff because they move every couple of years. And they have one spot in their driveway, and we have overflow parking. And, you know, the house, development was built around 2002, 2004, I believe, before my time in the county. And it's totally inadequate. And the amount of people who now park parallel to their properties is causing a health and safety concern in our neighborhood, to the fact that the HOA is now trying to get support from the county sheriff to intervene because people are parking and that a vehicle, just a normal passenger vehicle, can't get through the serpentine thing of people parking in front of their townhouses. So I'm sure for the single-family homes that are being proposed here, that might not be a problem. But when it gets to the multifamily and the townhouses, I've got a huge safety concern that this is not a minor amendment because you're talking about the health and safety of all these people, over 1,000, you know, homesteads, you know, where people now are going to have to find another place to park their vehicles. And it's one thing to provide for the people who live there, but I entertain. My wife has friends that come over, and they need overflow parking, you know, and we're provided by developer 2.1, I would say, parking spaces for our unit. And I'm not seeing that totally eliminating orange street parking from a PUD is a minor amendment. You're talking about a major change in how this is going to function from health and safety in terms of, you know, emergency vehicles getting in and out of that place and having the right with a right of way in order to be able to get in case, God forbid, you know, I bought a new phone and the lithium ion battery, you know, starts a fire, and now they need to get to us, but they can't because a neighbor across the street from me parked his vehicle in front of his townhouse, and the neighbor two doors down from me did the same thing. Now, you know, the standard, you know, rescue apparatus can't get in there. So I'm just confused about who, you know, you said it's discretionary, I'm confused about who's defining minor versus major, and I think that particular aspect of this action requested is not minor but major, because we're talking about health and safety of people.
Mr. Fazekas, I think there might be a question after staff gives their part of it and for the applicant.
Okay.
I don't think that's up to Mr. ...
I was going to suggest the same. Leave it to the applicant to explain why the overall...
I don't think Mr. Hauser...
Well, at least I...
...hear of Stewart's Grant to be maintained.
Okay, sure, 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 sure.
But as far as, I will say, though, is that when you go back and look at the list of the changes which alter the concept or intent of the planned development, including, and I pulled, this is the PUD book and straight from the development plan, the delineated list of what they specify are things which alter the concept or intent of the planned development, are increases in density, reductions of proposed open space, change in use, changes in road standards, access, utilities, water, electricity, and drainage, or the second bucket are changes in the final governing agreements, provisions, or covenants. Again, unless it falls in one of those, it's major. And again, given that parking wasn't spelled out among those lists of major changes, and given presentation I think is going to be made by the applicant tonight explaining that request, it didn't, in staff's opinion, rise to the level of a major change.
Well, thank you for addressing that. I understand now. Thank you. Sorry, I have.
Did you have anything further, Mr. Hauser?
The only other point that I, I believe the Planning Commission understands, which I'll say for the benefit of the audience and those listening as well, is to understand that PUDs do not come with a set expiration date. Obviously, we're dealing with a document that has some length. I'm older than our approving ordinance, but not by much. The issue, though, is that it's not for the Planning Commission to decide whether the PUD is out of date. If a PUD falls behind schedule, there is a mechanism within the comprehensive zoning ordinance for the county commissioners to begin a procedure to revoke a PUD, but that is solely within the county commissioners' remit and power to do. So it is not for the Planning Commission to point to the age of a PUD and simply say that the ordinance that approved that PUD and kind of the conditions that may have existed when it was around render our basically review and our obligation to review this according to what the comprehensive zoning ordinance requires of us moot, as the only other thing the memorandum touched upon that I forgot to bring attention to.
John, isn't there, is there two, is there two subjects that could render one moot by the commissioners? Isn't if it falls behind schedule by a year or two, and if it's older than 15 years and the commissioners decide to revoke it?
Those are it, correct.
Correct. So there's two ways, and it's over 15 years, but I guess they decided not to, not to do that if it's still in effect. But there is two mechanisms that could have been...
Two, two things that could trigger or give the commissioners, if they would choose to exercise it, grounds to revoke a PUD. And revoking a PUD is not a light thing, just as getting a PUD is not a light thing either. Revocation would have to be a hearing. It is a deprivation of a property right. In this case, it would be a deprivation of a property right. In this case, it would be a deprivation of a property right the developers already paid dearly for, thinking about the donations to the school and the time and energy dedicated to approving this. That's not something that we can do gently. Mr. Wyra, I also understand, I will say that, given the length of the history, or given the history and longevity of this particular PUD, because, just because it has not come before the Planning Commission does not mean that there has not been activity on the PUD. I believe that he is going to speak to steps and efforts that have been made to develop this in the last years.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question of you, John. Basically, what, if we follow your interpretation, what you're really saying is the, not only the commission, up here, the board, but the public has no input in this process at this point for schools?
So.
Because at that point, it becomes the director, which doesn't have a requirement to have any hearing.
So to repeat what was said earlier is that I think you go through concept site plan approval tonight as you normally would, but there is that provision at 70.14 that explicitly, for the purposes of concept site plan review, grandfathers in PUDs that were approved prior to 2008 from having to meet school seat capacity for APF. So, right, that section of concept site plan approval is, I do not think, before the board tonight. It will be before the director of the, of Land Use and Growth Management.
But the public has no, given that interpretation, the public basically has no input at this point in time.
So, again, the public is going to come up here and everybody, when they come to the microphone, has the right to say whatever they want. It's to put information before the board. Obviously, there's going to be information that is going to be matter to the director's determination when that is made, when we come down and look whether APF is there. And that typically is a straightforward application of a formula. Way back when, the county commissioners passed an ordinance that extrapolated a projected number of students at the elementary, middle and high school levels that a new dwelling unit would generate. What APF does, or how APF is computed in the, for the purposes of the county's analysis of whether APF has been satisfied or not, is that you look at how many dwelling units are proposed, plug those into the formula, times it by that projected yield of each student, and then look to see whether there are adequate seats countywide to meet the projected increase in demand that any development is going to bring about. That's the process that will be followed. That's what the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and that's what the grandfathering provision of the CZO leaves us in.
That's all well and good, but there's no input by the public, correct?
So.
I can't get you to answer that question. Yes or no?
Well, I think what I'm trying to say is that people will say, come up here and, again, anybody can speak to what they'd like during public testimony. Nothing I say should be taken as, do not come here and speak your piece, whatever it is. But what I would say is that if someone following public testimony comes and says, I like this project, I'd approve it, I'd be for it, but for the issue of schools, that is not a proper consideration for the board to base its decision upon tonight.
So, Mr. Howser, just to clarify what, I'm hearing layman's terms. It sounds to me that this developer knew that they were going to build something and it was going to be big, it was going to have an impact on many things, including our school system. So in anticipation of that, they made some proffers, they donated some land or some money, which essentially, not a legal term, but they secured some spots in our school system for the students that are going to eventually live in this development. Is that, am I right in that assumption or is that, like, am I really?
So I disagree with that.
Okay.
Because what we are saying here is not that APF won't be looked at for schools at any point, it's that it's not part of concept site plan approval tonight.
Okay.
Regardless of the donations that were made, the position of staff right now is that once we proceed, if we proceed from concept site plan, then to actually building out the particular phases and doing the subdivision plats and going forward with, you know, 12-year buildout of this plan, it's every time they come along to propose a new major site plan that the director of land use has to at that time look and see whether at that moment adequate seats exist per the county's APF rules.
I see.
So certainly, I think, going back in time to 1997, where the land that the developer offered part of that, and was it mitigation and did it help along that determination? Yes, but there's also an APF finding at the time that, again, back in 1997, it was projected that the county, particularly with the 12-year buildout of the program, would be able to have sufficient school seats at the time this was coming along.
Because, I mean, I wasn't here, you know, back then, neither were you, I believe, but it seems like 1996, 97 was when the county saw a explosion of growth because of BRAC and all the different people who were relocating, including my wife, to the base here. And I think that's when a lot of things changed. So the timing of this PUD and the changing of the facts on the ground is something that I'm struggling with, with this PUD, particularly because on one hand, I'm feeling like they put their money in, kind of reserving their spots, you know, for their students, but on the other hand, the county did grow, we approved other developments in the meantime before this PUD, you know, and now, at least for the high school, it seems like those spots are full and there's no vacant spots waiting for, you know, a thousand new households to have their kids go to high school, so.
So I agree, it's something the developer has to reckon with, and we aren't quite in the position we were when this ordinance was enacted in 1997.
Okay.
But what I would also say is, again, is that simply pointing to the passage of time, lengthy passage of time, that is not what the Planning Commission reviews. It's the county commissioners who are the only ones vested with the power by the CZO to say that by the lapse of time.
Okay.
This PUD is out of date and should be revoked or amended. That is the only body that can make that determination.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Howser, who has or what agency was supposed to notify when the 15 years was up? You mentioned that there was progression moving forward with the PUD that would supersede that 15-year period?
So it would, the 15-year period is not automatic. It's not that 15 years come by and the commissioners shall, upon the lapse of 15 years, revoke a PUD. It's that 15, if that construction takes longer than 15 years, the commissioners may at their discretion. So it wasn't the matter of a missed deadline, it wasn't a matter that, you know, if only someone had caught it, things might be different. It was always something that this is going to stay on the books until the county commissioners choose to remove it. And it's nothing, there's no automatic lapse or expiration of these types of planned unit developments.
But I believe your question was what agency is responsible for even bringing the question forward? Otherwise, the commissioners will never know.
So something like this, the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, that all falls under Department of Land Use and Growth Management?
So, if I may, we have, we are charged with two things this evening. One is to approve the reduction of the home sites, right? And the other is to approve the addition of acreage.
For the text amendment, there are four amendments being, I think, there are two parts, the text amendment and the concept site plan approval. The text amendment are the four requests the developers making to change the development plan, the reduction in overall number of home sites, the corresponding decrease in the number of homes that will be built each year, the elimination of on-street parking, and the annexation of those two additional parcels. Those are all part of the text amendment, which is up first. Second part is the concept site plan approval of the proposed development on, or the buildout of the development plan. That's next, and that's what there will be another staff report on.
Okay.
After.
Because the concerns that we all seem to have regarding the space for schools, that's not our, that's not our call. I've heard you say that, right?
I agree. That, again, I think is clearly spelled out in the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance.
John, let me ask you one more question, you know. And I know you can't answer for the developer, you know, I'm not asking you to, but since they think, or you, I guess you and staff have been told that they think that this really shouldn't be a concept site approval, but all the paperwork, all the documentation says review of a concept site plan, are they basically agreeing to a review of a concept site plan? I mean.
Well, that's their concern, and that's what I tried to say on the record, is that the developer wants to reserve the right to object or to argue that staff has made the wrong call on this one, that by going forward tonight and going through the process we're asking them to go for, they won't be cut off from being able to argue to the court that they shouldn't have been subjected to any of this at all. So we're just, for the record, they're acknowledging a difference in opinion on that one, they're going to go forward, but they are reserving their right to seek review of that determination by staff, and the county's not going to come up in court and say that because they went forward tonight, they waived all their ability to argue this and asked someone to decide whether or not we were wrong about that.
I guess what I'm asking is if they're agreeing to have this, what's labeled as a concept site plan review? If it was approved, fine. If it was not approved, they would have the same process that they would have anyway, Board of Appeals, court.
Right. They're not, they're not going to be prejudiced by going forward tonight.
Okay. But they wouldn't, it wouldn't be a, they would go to land use and say, oh, wait a minute, we shouldn't even have done that. We want the director to give us a ruling because we don't even think we needed a concept site plan. It would still be the steps of Board of Appeals, court.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
John, I have an easy question for you. So in the body of the ordinance, it identifies a PUD as a floating zone. It goes on to say that therefore it's not subject to change or mistake, to change and mistake rule. Is that, I liken that to the change of zoning, where you have changed the neighborhood or a mistake.
Correct.
It's the same sort of thing.
Right. Because among the things that a PUD can change or relax are the use types that can be within a zone. So I'll, I'm not going to pick, I won't pick on any particular use type, but we'll say that if a use type would ordinarily be disallowed in a certain zone, the PUD can allow that as part of the PUD's overall vision, that particular use type. That is the purpose of the 2004 amendment. Schools originally were a disallowed use within the underlying zoning district. The amendment in 2004, one of them, was to allow schools as an acceptable use type within the PUD so we could get George Washington Carver Elementary built on that site.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's no question, well, my perspective, the major change in 2004, you know, with regard to putting the onus on the director rather than the Planning Commission is being exemplified here. They would much rather have a director make a decision on APF than they would a group of seven people make a vote. I mean, that's just common sense. I mean, I think.
Right.
The other thing is, is it, was there a process, and I'm not, since 1997, was there a process when they were going to come forward? And I'm not, and perhaps they've been busy doing all sorts of things. Is there a process where the county commissioners had an opportunity to be briefed by Land Use and Growth Management with regard to the PUD, its age, changes that were, that had happened over time? Were the commissioners aware of that? Are they aware of the 15-year rule?
So there's language in, as far as the mechanism, as far as the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, there's a requirement in the CZO and was at the time that there should have been a provision in the development plan to bring at least a bi-annual report about the update, was I think what it said. Now, the way that was actually phrased was that it should be in the development plan. I looked through the development plan, I did not see where that was actually incorporated.
You get PUD reports from Wildwood all the time.
Mm-hmm. Every year, annually, is what the requirement in the CZO is right now. Now, I did not, looking through the development plan, see where that requirement actually got incorporated. And once the ordinance comes down in 1997 and our CZO in 2010 says that the approving ordinance is the controlling ordinance with respect to the obligations here, would it have certainly been a best practice? Absolutely. Was it what the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance required at the time? That's how I read it. But I don't see in the development plan where that requirement to make an annual report actually materialized. Going forward, it is certainly something that should be done and will be done, but again, I think part of that is, though there weren't reports being made to the Planning Commission, there was activity with the staff of the Department of Land Use and Growth Management. So it wasn't that we had a PUD lying fallow, just for whatever reason, developers did not feel it was the right time to build. Again, the applicant will speak to that.
Because PUDs are inherently bad. I mean, it all has to do with the documents, what they say. There's a plus on either side. I mean, you're laid down with some expectation of what you are looking at moving forward. I mean, I understand that. Again, I guess, I guess when I look at this, I'm, you know, because I was around in 97, a lot of these folks out here were around in 97, too. We have a couple commissioners that were out here. So, so, and I go, and I walk the property. I look at changes, look for changes, you know, how has, how have we changed as a community? Is the PUD, is the PUD, and it may well be, still in our best interest and in their best interest, the way it's written? That's a question. I don't, you know, I don't have explicit answers for that. But there have been a lot of changes. And Mr. Fazekas is exactly right. During that time, I mean, everything, I mean, things were going gangbusters. The Navy was this and the Navy was that, and they were moving, you know, hell-bent for leather, moving forward. And I suspect that there was, there is some expectation of land donation and open space and expanded buffers and all of the rest of that, that these folks, these planning commissioners before us spent a great deal of time, and the citizens spent a great deal of time going over. And if we are to believe that we are comfortable with 20 something years later, 25 years later, that we're still comfortable with those things that are in place, then fine. But if not, then we have an obligation, not just us, the community, us, and the developer. The developer doesn't want to do this badly, you know, to look at other possibilities. We have, I have two documents with me tonight, both, again, some of the folks in this room sat with those documents with regard to affordable housing. And we're talking about housing here, about affordable housing. And what is affordable housing? There's a definition. We actually have a definition for it, but nobody shares it. And it's affordable housing is a catch-all term for all things housing. And so those two documents that were, that were the benefit of the county by way of the private enterprise, if you would, the Chamber of Commerce did those, both of those up. But they were never successful at getting them to public hearing, which I find, and I didn't know that until just recently, when I realized that Land Use and Growth Management didn't have copies of the documents. So what it does spell out, it spells out incentives, it's densities, all the rest of that, and these, and it's very clear what the calculations might be. And they are beneficial to developers, and they're beneficial to the county and to the citizenry of the county. So I guess, I'm not opposed to this PUD. My concern is that of the things that we had in place 25 years ago, have they changed enough that we would look at it again? And I'm not trying to put anybody through any, you know, into hate and discontent, it's just a matter of, that's, you know, it's a matter of planning. You know, we don't, this board doesn't plan very much. What we do is that we, we're like baseball players, but we play catch all the time. We get to respond to what's brought before us. We, very little do we come up with. And so at some point, you're going to have to say what you want and stop complaining about what you get. And I think the county needs to do a better job of that. So, anyway, that's my, that's what I got to say.
I have one more question. A few years back, we used to have, Wildwood used to come before the Planning Commission once a year.
They still do.
And they do. What about the other PUDs to keep the Planning Commission up to date? I mean, is it just Wildwood because it's active or no, non-active or?
Wasn't that a condition that was in that?
Was that a condition that was in there?
Was a condition that was in that PUD, if I remember right?
Mr. Howard Thompson, Mr. Thompson is correct. The Wildwood PUD was laid down in 1978, much older than this, but again, even back then, it's, the provisions in that. it's, the provisions in that ordinance creating the PUD are what are going to control. And I'm not too, too familiar with the Wildwood PUD owing to its age, and it was enough to try and get a handle on this one and what the laws were in 1997, let alone 20 years back from that. But my understanding is that, and I could look back and confirm it, is that that is also spelled out in the PUD and the development plan for the PUD.
I was just curious that it was in one plan and not in the rest. Just food for thought. I mean, if you did it for one, why wouldn't you do it for the others, to bring it before us and, or whoever's on the board at the time, so that they could see whether activity was moving forward and if it had changed? And that way it stays concurrent and everyone's up to date on what's moving.
So, but the bottom line is adequacy is adequacy.
Whether you're talking about water, sewer, school seats, adequacy. That means you can make a finding that if you build a house, a child will have a place to go to school. Or if you build a house, there'll be water and sewer. I mean, Marley Taylor operates at 60, about 61% now. And the reason it does that is because of the EDUs that are paid for by St. Mary's College and the United States Government, the Naval State Air Station. That's why it's only at 61, 60%. So it's, there's adequacy, but at the end of the day, when this PUD moves forward, and if it's phased over, was it 100 a year, 10 years, if that's the case, will there be adequacy when it, when it's time? And I hate to say, you know, a lot of times, you know, I'm not saying this is their case, but at times, you know, you need to keep moving forward because you're not moving forward. You need to, you move forward, you need to cover, and you move forward, and you cover, you know, that sort of thing. So, but adequacy is just that. It's either you have, you have seats or you don't. And if you don't have seats, and you don't have, currently, we don't have a school in the CIP. It was taken out two years ago. And we don't, we don't have enough population for kids anyway for that, for those, for seats or a school to be constructed. And if, and if that's the case, then you start moving kids. You start moving kids north where there's, where there are seats. And this room is pretty full tonight. You start redistricting all these folks, moving them from the south to the middle, and then the middle to the north, you will fill up three of these rooms over that. And so again, I'm back to the adequacy, you know, are the seats and the sewer connections available? And are they, is it adequate? And I don't have, you know, I mean, I have a sense about whether they are or not. I just don't want, because along the way, there are going to be other developments. There are going to be other folks that are going to, other people are going to come forward with other developments, looking to put more strain on the infrastructure that is already struggling. We don't know, as we sit here tonight, we don't know, we don't have a, our funding, you know, has, is different now. We have an excise tax moving forward with regard to the infrastructure. We don't know how that's going to play out. I don't think we do. Maybe we do, but I don't know that we do. And unfortunately, in the really good times, we so under-collected for impact fees, it's just, it's an egregious thing, and that's not for here tonight, probably. But I'm back to the adequacy, you know, along the way, these folks are going to commit to a development moving forward, and there are going to be other developments going to come along, and they're going to put stress on the availability for the infrastructure to support those new endeavors. So that's also an issue that they need to consider, and certainly the county, too.
That would all be reviewed by staff as each phase comes in, though, would it not? And the decision would be made.
According to this, they would, the director would make that-
That's right.
Make that finding, I guess, in each one of the phases.
As they go through each of the phases.
Correct. As the more detailed site plans come through, that's when the APF.
Right.
And speaking again to, I mean, I've said before, the particularities of these PUDs are each one is a unique being, and everything has its own separate ordinance, everything up to a point has its own laws. That provision, that there be a detailed analysis and specific finding of adequate public facilities at the time of further development in the PUD, as far as I know, that is unique to this PUD and isn't typically-
That's not.
-insisted upon elsewhere, which again speaks to, as we go through and hear from the applicant tonight, it is worth reckoning that there was a thorough examination of this done by planning commission subsequent. And our thoughts about decisions that ought to have been made back then or what the law ought to have said now can't distract this body or staff from what the law is in fact, what it in fact is, something to bear in mind.
And the planning commission back then was thorough. I mean, I went back and read all of those, you know, all that information. And then again, Joe left the room, but Joe Anderson was on the planning commission, then Shelby Glazo was there. A lot of folks were looking out, making sure the buffers, in the time, the buffers were what they should be. And I mean, there's all kinds of information that we've received with regard to buffers, DNR, and all the rest of that, which they will have to address, you know, moving forward. I guess the only thing I'm really asking about, you know, is our infrastructurally, you know, will, will the infrastructure be there through the phasing, through their phasing plan? And if not, they can't make a finding, then everything comes to a stop.
That's going to be part of what we're going to have to ask staff and the applicant for.
So, so one more time, I need a big crayon for this? Big crayon. So tonight, we could go through and do all the minors, okay? And turn around and then go to the concept plan, and the concept plan could be turned down, but it would still go immediately to the director.
Pardon, I didn't quite catch the, that if the concept site plan was turned down, what would go to the director?
Yeah, what is, what is the next phase? Say the board turned it, turned it down, the concept plan. That would automatically move to-
Board of Appeals.
Board of Appeals.
I can't speak for what-
No, I mean-
Right. Decision the applicant would make, but, or they revise a concept site plan. But again, I think they're going to, I won't speak for the applicant again, but just remember that concept site plan, what the board is looking for tonight is consistency with the development plan, and then the determination that adequate public facilities may exist at the time of estimated completion for each of these, that as these houses are built out, and as this development over the next decade is constructed, that adequate public facilities either exist now or will exist, may exist at the time that they are built. That's the determination they're making. The only difference for APF that you would conduct in this before any other concept site plan is that schools are not part of the APF determination for the planning commission. As far as concept site plan review, they are grandfathered in, and that's only going to be assessed by the director at the time of further detailed major site plan applications.
So to play off your question, if turned down, you're basically saying you're back to the 1800 houses, right? In other words, the original PUD.
So if the amendment is turned down, yes, then we don't have the reduction in housing.
And if the amendment is turned down, you can't move forward with the concept.
Right.
I'm assuming, because the concept calls for an 1152 and some, and some different terminology. I'm just-
I would assume the applicant would, yeah, see no point in proceeding with concept site plan.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Howser, but stick around.
Thank you for your first hour.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now I need a whole crayon box.
Ready for the staff end of this?
I think he's done.
I think at this point, Mr. Wyro would like to get up and speak regarding the amendment.
You're moving awfully slowly.
Hell, I'm not quite sure. I'm trying to think about where to begin. Good evening. Paige Wyro on behalf of the applicant. Let me, Mr. Howser referred to some, he lacks any memory, fortunately or unfortunately, I've got a lot. In 2004, I represented the Chaney's, who did a deal with Mr. Knott to put this project together.
Could you get a little-
I'm sorry.
Or just bring the microphone.
Normally I don't need it, but my voice is a little hoarse tonight. And at the time, the PUD was already in place. A gentleman, by the name of Barton Mitchell, did it. It didn't pan out. He was out of Baltimore. Anyway, when, so Bubby and, Mr. Knott and the Chaney's became partners, they mined the property on the 16-acre parcel, which is, we've requested be added to the property. It's owned by a Chaney affiliate. There used to be a ready-mix or a Santa Grava wash plant on that site, and they have shut that down and moved it elsewhere. So that was 2004. I will tell you that in 2006, that timeframe, 2007, they started contemplating what happens to this property at the end, at the end of mining. They talked to a firm out of Michigan, a developer that went into old quarry sites that had lakes on them and built lakefront communities. They got sort of far down the road with the conversations with those folks, and then 2008 hit. And that was the end of that. In 2010, the economy was starting to move a little bit after the banking crisis, and it was, at that point, I had gone in-house with Chaney, was their general counsel, and was in-house as well as their land manager. And it was in 2010 that I began to come down periodically to have visits with Mr. Shire and members of staff as to what was going to have, happen with this property. But the economies were such that they simply couldn't make the development happen, given the numbers that they were told. I mean, the housing market was terrible, the economy was terrible. Notwithstanding that, we did a whole bunch of internal evaluation that the impact of mining would have on the development. You'll see in your staff report that we did a traffic update to the original traffic study back in 2012. That was part of the conversations that I was having with Mr. Shire at the time. And that was about the same time that I left and went back out on my own, wasn't directly employed by Chaney, but still continued to represent him on this project. So there was a lot of conversation back and forth. That, again, we could not find an end user for the project, but there was periodic contact with Mr. Shire. And in fact, it was during those conversations that I met Bill Hunt for the first time, when he was the deputy. So we moved forward, we, there was a lot of contact in the 2014, 15, when y'all went through the master plan for Lexington Park about, and a lot of conversation and analysis during that time period as to whether or not the PUD would be voluntarily abandoned. And they determined that they weren't going to, they couldn't do it, or they opted not to, not to do it. So, I mean, the point is, is as Mr. Howser said, while there weren't, weren't reports to folks, direct reports to this body or direct reports to the planning commission, there was a lot of activity going on in the background. I know the commissioners were aware of what Mr. Knott's and Chaney's positions was with respect to the comp plan amendments back then, and, you know, they, they did what they did. We moved it forward, and here, here we find ourselves today. There is a difference of opinion, as Mr. Howser indicated, as to what this board is tasked with, with doing. We submitted it primarily to get the minor amendments done. I have a question in my mind, and I, there was something posted to board docs late this afternoon that did not get included with the original submission, which was, this, the purpose of our application was to, to ask for the minor amendments and then bring this board, this body up to date as to what had been going on, which is why the additional traffic studies were done and submitted to you, which is why there were environmental studies done, which is why we had the conversation with Mr. Hunt about school capacity. And Mr. Hunt initially made, made the determination that there was enough capacity in the school. As it turned out, they were, the numbers were being miscalculated, and because they were counting seats in technical schools, the numbers got modified. And we have the letter from the Board of Edge indicating that when you get to full build-out, which is going to happen over a long period of time, there's not capacity. But there is capacity today. There's certainly capacity for the first few phases of this house, because it doesn't become a problem until a long time down the road, under the, under the Board of Edge's projections. In any event, we applied for the, for a minor change. And the minor change, which, which is to reduce the number of units, I'm not even convinced that from a legal standpoint, given the way this document defines what needs to be, what amendments need to be approved, that a reduction in the number of units constitutes a minor amendment, which this board is supposed to approve. I certainly don't think that, that the board, or that there would have been a requirement to increase the amount of open space, but that's what we're asking you to approve. So we're asking you to reduce the number of units, which is lesser impact, allow them to increase the open space, which is certainly a benefit to the, to the public, and reduce the number of units to a phasing plan of 100 homes per year, which again, puts less strain on an annual basis on the systems that you all have been discussing with, with Mr. Howser. So those three asks, I think, are to the public benefit. So, and again, given the way they define major and minor changes, and they are defined the page 95 of the book, they seem, those, those three request amendments would seem to, common sense would tell you, are good things for everybody involved. With respect to the parking issue that you described, Mr. Fazekis, let me be clear. We are not talking about getting rid of all on-street parallel parking in the entirety of the projects. Okay? That's, it is primarily on the major roadways. And, and parallel parking on the major roadways actually is probably, potentially more of a safety issue than, than, than allowing it. Additionally, and as I understand it, you'll hear some more from Ms. Murray, who's, who's one of the planners for, for the project, there are some townhomes in it, and they will, each townhome's going to have, you know, parking as you described in front of the garage, but there also will be planned pods of excess parking scattered throughout the townhome portions of it, is just not on-road parking, because you really can't do it in a, in a townhome complex. So we're not getting rid of all parking, parallel parking throughout the projects, is primarily on, on the major roadways and in the townhome developments. So, and Ms. Murray can provide you with, with more detail on that. So, and then insofar as the addition of, of the property, there's, the smaller of the two pieces is in the middle of that parcel that front Great Mills Road. Why that parcel, from a legal perspective, did not get included in the initial PUD, I don't know, but it is literally surrounded by other property that is, that is part of the PUD.
Could you bring up a map and show us what you're talking about? Is that possible to bring up a?
I believe it's in the-
And everybody else who may have a question about.
You see the red dots? I guess it's the red dot in the northwest center that front Great Mills Road, that's where the one acre, one something acre parcel is. And then on the east side of the parcel, where you see the bare spot where the other red dot is, that's where the 16 acres is, and that's where the Santa Grava processing facility used to be. So 16 acres to the northeast, and then that red dot there that, on the parcel that fronts, fronts Great Mills Road to the northwest of the lake. And that's, the parcel that is near Great Mills Road is the parcel that's literally surrounded by the PUD. And the 16-acre parcel is, is immediately adjacent to it. So, you know, let me, having said all that, let me speak to this, the disagreement that Mr. Howser referenced. As you, there is a 100-page document which comprises the state- As you, there is a 100-page document which comprises the standards applicable to this PUD. And it addresses street carrier, street configuration, layouts, performance standards, recreational areas, parks, residential squares, circles, open space, so on and so forth. Everything that this board would consider as part of a concept plan under your normal And I understand what, what, what Mr. Hauser said and we've just got a, you know, a professional, respectful disagreement. But, but the PUD document, which he's described as law at pages nine and 10, describes a two-step process for submittals of approvals to this body. The first one, or generally, the first one is what they call a development plan. So a concept plan was not even a word that Lugum was using back in 1997 when this happened. The concept plan is, is a product of legislation since. So it says that the first step of the development plan is the information necessary for the county commissioners, not this board, the county commissioners to make findings of fact with respect to the PUD. And this, the first step identifies a second step, which is a minor amendment. And then from there you go to step two, and step two is major site plan. I mean, it's, it's from our perspective, it's, it's there in black and white in nine and 10, and that from a concept plan standpoint, that ship sailed when, when the county commissioners approved this PUD. Because everything, all the, the, the excruciating detail that is in that 100 page, pages is what we are required to do under the PUD. And now, so it identifies setbacks. The commissioners adopted those setbacks. This board doesn't, this commission doesn't have the authority to undo what the commissioners did and incorporate it in, in this ordinance. And yet you are going to hear complaints tonight, I'm sure, about setbacks when we get to the, to the, to the second phase of this. So how we're parsing what got approved as a development plan and what is done in the normal course from a concept plan standpoint are irreconcilable. And that's where the difference of opinion between Mr. Hauser and myself exists. We believe that, that what is before you tonight is our request to amend the PUD. And then all the traffic studies and everything else, the updates, stuff that we provided to you, we did as, and you'll see in the papers that got posted to board docs today, is, was intended to identify for this board, to update this board about what we are doing and the why, and to address the changes in the circumstances since the PUD, PUD was originally approved. Now, that provision is not in this PUD as Mr. St. Clair identified. I will tell you that we voluntarily did that to bring this, and we will voluntarily come back every year if that's what you want us to do, to tell you what is, is, is going on. But by the same token, from an APF standpoint, the, this document, as you pointed out, Mr. Evans, it's somebody else's call on the issue of schools and water and sewer and traffic. And that's the way that the document was set up. Now notwithstanding that, if we come before this body every year to bring you up, up to date of what you're doing, you certainly have the power of, of advice to, to Lugum. So it doesn't take you completely out, out, out of the process. But the reason you have a PUD is so these approvals build on one another and notwithstanding the passage of time, the developer's got to invest a ton of money in basic infrastructure to get this project up and running, isn't subject to the vagaries of changing administrations and changing views about what is good and what is not good. And that's, that's the benefit of, of the PUD to the developer should be, and that's one of the primary reasons that we opted not to abandon it when the zoning ordinance was, was, was changed.
So, Mr. Wierig, you, you, the developer thinks that they should be able to apply for 1152 building permits and just go in there and start doing what they need to be doing?
No, sir, not at all, not at all. The second part of it is step two will address the specific requirements of the zoning ordinance, which means that every time we apply for a site plan, we're going to have to prove, for instance, that we've complied with step one, two, and three of stormwater, we're going to have to address the tier two concerns, we're going to have to do everything that a builder would be normally required to do to get a site, detailed site plan and a plan of subdivision approved to be able to sell lots. So, no, we're not, it, it's one, we would never do it anyway, because it's, it's uneconomical to, there's no point in building 1100 houses and letting them sit.
Oh, sure.
So, but no, we anticipate that we're going to have to go through the same process that every other builder in this county goes through to get it, to get their home sites approved to build, or so the builder can build a house and sell it. So, so we're going to have to build roads. I mean, I will tell you that we started this, and you'll hear more about this from, from Mr. Dixon, who's down here for, for Reliable. The first thing we did almost two years ago, when they started to activate this project again, was pick up the telephone, call Metcom. And we have, Mr. Dixon and Ms. Murray have been in constant contact with the folks at Metcom, trying to coordinate the water and sewer demands for this site with their capital program. And we had a bit of a year delay because Metcom recommended that we consider an onsite system, because it might work better with what they had contemplated and so on and so forth. Well, they evaluated that system for about a year and come to find out it's about four times as expensive as, as what's currently on the table. So we got, we got to satisfy, we got to satisfy traffic, we got to satisfy water and sewer, and you've heard what Mr. Hauser said about schools, and I've got a bit of a different twist on that as well. But, but it, no, we don't expect there, that there are no rules that apply to us, we got to go through the normal process, just like everybody else. It's just the idea of a development plan, plan and the concept plan are effectively the same thing.
But after tonight, you will just be on each phase dealing with land use and/or Metcom or schools or who, probably just land use?
That is correct. And Metcom, I mean, we're have to deal with Metcom. Metcom's got a multimillion dollar capital project, they, they've got issues with their pump houses and stuff, which we are trying to work through the process to get all those things resolved, but it's complicated.
Let me ask you a question about adequacy, adequacy. You may know, you may not know, I would assume that you will choose to purchase the total EDUs if Metcom has them available and just start paying on them for the, for the, for the build out?
Well, that's complicated too, because initially, initially we were told there aren't any. Then when we started down the path of doing the onsite system, we got a telephone call and said, oh, lo and behold, there are some. But we proceeded down the path of pursuing the onsite system and 12 months later, so quite frankly, maybe Mr. Dixon can speak to it when, when he comes up. I don't know that they've gotten, need to sell it the, currently today. We, we, we're going to get something resolved with, with Metcom, it's a question of sequencing what they're going to do with what we're going to do. For instance, they've got a line that they're going to, a major sewer line they're going to put along Great, Great Mills Road, well, we need to put in one too. So what's the point of doing, sticking two lines in parallel and not sequencing and taking benefit of, of the synergies, you know, at the same time? So those are all the kinds of very, my, the lawyer-like version of, of what's going on. They're trying to sequence and figure out the, splitting the costs and the timing and all the rest of that.
Is there any concern with a project so long and so lengthy, of like, I'm assuming 12 years, 100 houses a year?
Right.
Somewhere around that?
Sure.
Is there any concern, I mean, I've, I've seen a lot of subdivisions that they start and they build, most of them aren't 1,200 homes. They start and they build a couple of streets, and next thing you know, they're, they're gone. Either they went bankrupt or they're out of there, leaving the people that bought the homes with a really nice plan of, well, we're going to put a pool in, we're going to put a recreation center in, we're going to put all these amenities in for you. That, that never happened.
Well, I can tell you, I, I sure as heck can't sit here and tell you that there's never, never a risk of-
Sure.
Of that. I will tell you that we are dealing with a national home builder.
With a what?
A national home builder who's under contract to build all these houses.
Yeah, I seen the name, I recognize.
So, I mean, they've got staying power and even though, even with the interest rates hikes and everything else and the impact that's had, that's had on the housing market, they still want to stay in the game. Insofar as, insofar as the developer declaring bankruptcy and, and walking out the door, right now the, the developer is Mr. Knotts family, the Chaney family, and the Reliable Concrete Asphalt folks at, at Anarone County. So they're all locally based, they've all got deep roots in the community, and it would be, it would take an earth-shattering event for all those people to walk away from this project, because they got to live down here after, after it's done. So I can't sit here and tell you, it can never happen.
Sure.
But is it, is it, I think, is with this, I think it's less likely with the combination that's, that you have. It's not some mercenary, national folks from, from, from out of town who have no roots in, in, in Saguaro, Maryland. These developers do.
Okay, thank you. The, so according to this, Metcom has 1,853 EDUs that are available. Whether that's right or wrong at this very moment, I don't know. I'm guessing, that's what it says here anyway. So I guess, back to my earlier concerns, we have other, in the county, we have other projects that are ongoing.
Right.
And to Mr. Van Kirk's comment with regard, are you going to buy? Are you going to go ahead and plunk down the money, you know, and, and, and start the meter with, with, with Metcom? The concern that I have with, with any of that is that you get started, other development starts, and then someone wakes up one Monday morning and says, uh-oh, now there's a jailbreak. There's a jailbreak to available EDUs. And I, and I have to say, you know, you're laughing, but-
No, I, 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 because it's, I'm laughing because it's complicated and I understand.
Well, yeah, I know. I mean, because the alternatives that Metcom has here is actually one of two. The batch plant, or you're going to have to build a pumping station, one or the other.
Well, I think we've, there's already a pumping station in the offing for us, I don't think-
Well, yeah, 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 well, the other, well, it's, it's, it's at capacity though.
Well, no, but I'm, that pump station, again, I don't want, I'm, I'm probably going to mess up the facts, because Mr. Dixon's more and Ms. Murray are more intimate and familiar with, with the details of it.
Right.
To answer your specific question.
Yeah.
There has been conversations, I know, about upgrading that pumping station and us bearing the cost of doing it to secure the capacity for this project.
Well, Metcom really appreciates developers building pumping stations.
I under, I imagine they do.
So, and, and the other issue, the other issue isn't necessarily with treating crap. You have to do something with the water.
We're going to build a water tower, we already know that.
Do something with the sewage, the water. You know, I mean, you're not going to get, you're not, the state's not going to allow you to pump anything more than what it's pumping into the tributaries as it is. And so right now, they're, they're creating capacity using science. The parts per million continues to go down, which creates a little more capacity. They're recalculating gallons per day from 250 down to 185 or someplace in between, which opens up some. They relooked at issuance of EDUs with regard to apartments. Apartments are, get a half of an EDU now rather than a full one. But at the end of the day, that pumping, that Marley Taylor has an absolute maximum of nitrogen and phosphorus that it's going to be able to handle. And again, I mean, I sit here as a planning commissioner, I'm not trying to, you know, get in your way of any of this. But what I don't want to have happen is exactly what Mr. Van Kirk was talking about. We've had it in the past where development's going to come and they're going to do really well, just down the street from this development on Great Mills Road. They came here, they wanted townhouses, they came through the process, they, they decided to go to Platte. And the question was, are you really sure you want to do that? Absolutely, the market is great, we're going to do that, only to find out it wasn't that great. And they, they went belly up, it went, it reverted back to its base density. And Mr. Taylor has a building on that, on that parcel today. So that's also part of my concern with regard to availability of school seats, EDUs and the rest. I'm not trying to get in your way, but I am a realist.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm going to defer to Mr. Dixon, because you know apparently much more about it than I do from a legal-
We should have got the cart before the horse. You know, we're talking about a whole lot of things that-
I, I-
After the fact.
So, insofar as school seats are concerned, I'm going to sort of follow up on what Mr. Fazekas said, we've got a bit of a different twist. The 12 acres was a proffer as part of getting this PUD approved. The 20 acres, which was donated in 2004, was not. And I can tell you what the expectation of, of that donation was, was that, was that we were, this project had its school seats when it donated, donated almost 40 acres to the, I have no doubt-
I'm not saying it's right.
No, no.
I'm not saying it's right, I'm just- I have no doubt that when you donated that, and that, that school site was donated, you folks had adequacy at the school site. Problem was, it's 25 years later.
I understand that problem is not-
And there's no adequacy at the school site.
Well, there's, there's adequacy today, there may not be adequacy if we build all 1,500 units or 1,400 units at once.
Okay.
So, so for the first phase is insofar as you, the, the legal test that you all are going to address, which is maybe at that time of site plan, and since it's going to be in sequential, I think there's little doubt that from, there, there is adequacy in the school system. Might not be for the fifth or the sixth or the seventh, but there certainly is for the first few. And I'll let Mr. Dixon address the rest of your. So anyway, sort of rambling response to a lot of what Mr. Hauser said, I apologize for that. I do have one sort of point, point of order. How do you, how are we going to proceed? Because I know a lot of folks really are not here, I don't think for the first question, we've set a questions, we've asked you to, to answer, they're here for the second, which you've, the, the positions, I'll, I'll reiterate that, you know, we're going to move forward, but it's without prejudice to any rights, rights we may have. So you, because we were going to update you anyway. So with that, are you, are-
We need your-
How are you going to proceed? Are you going to finish the first one, then move to the second, or what?
We need your presentation for the first one.
Okay.
Or the information that you can provide us with in order to make a decision as to whether we want to okay that. If we okay that, or turn it down, if we okay that, we will go to the second hearing of the evening. If we deny that, then we will leave that up to you as to whether you want to go forward with the second hearing.
Okay.
Am I correct on that, Mr. Hauser? Okay, thank you.
All right, well, with that, I'll bring Mr.
You can sit up here at the desk, Mr. Dixon. Did I have a chance to swear you in, Mr. Dixon?
Hello. As the old man here on this board, make sure you bring this thing right up to your mouth, both of you, because sitting over here in the corner, sometimes I can't hear all of it.
Okay.
Mr. Dixon, did I have a chance to swear you in?
Yeah, you did with the whole group, yes. Yes, you did. John Dixon, I'm with Reliable Real Estate Services, the developer of the project on behalf of the property owner, Stuart Grant, Stuart's Grant LLC. All right, so, Mr. Dixon, why don't you tell the commission a little bit about the partners and your experience and where you want to take this, this project before we get to the particular matters of the PUD amendment?
So my organization, Reliable Real Estate Services, we represent well over 60 years in the real estate development business in the state of Maryland. Various partners, all of which include members of the Baldwin family who own Reliable Contracting. We are very active with members of the Chaney family and Chaney Enterprises doing projects throughout predominantly central Maryland and down into southern Maryland. And we've developed large communities, small communities, office buildings, hotels, we're doing, we're now doing some senior living facilities, because there's an awful lot of people that look like me that are going to need to live in those, those places in the, in the coming years. And myself, I've, I was responsible for the development of the- And myself, I've, I was responsible for the development of the largest planned unit development in the history of Harford County at one point in my career. And that was a 1,400 acre parcel that ended up having over 2,000 units, housing units of all different types. It had 2 million square feet of industrial space, 100,000 square foot shopping center, an exit off of I-95, an overpass over Route 40, a rail line coming into the business park, school site, daycare centers, open space. And, you know, the vision for that is very similar to what this project, the vision for this project is today. And it's a mixture of housing types with some community, some retail services, convenience, retail. And the schools kind of came ahead of time. We, we did that as the project was developing.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes, sir.
That parcel you're talking about, the 1,400 acres?
Yes.
Was that a continuous build? Did it have lapses because of the market? Did it change over time? You know, was it 2,000 homes? Was it supposed to be 1,500 in some commercial space? Did it change or did it kind of follow the plan?
It, it, it did both. It did both. Because as the market changed, Harford County went through a pretty substantial bedroom community growth during the life of that project, started in the eighties and it finished in 2000. It did take a number of years to get it to grow. But there were parcels where we had to change the use on parcels because the demand changed. Traffic patterns changed. When, when we brought in Exit 80 off of I-95, it completely changed the way traffic came into the community, how trucks came into the business park. And, you know, parents got, you know, the residents got to and from work to their, to their homes. And it did. It evolved over time. As, as Mr. Hauser said, these, these documents, these PUD documents, they're, they're, they're a living being. I mean, they do evolve over time. And it's in everyone's best interest to allow them to do so so that the community that is the end result of that document is the best product it can be for everyone.
One of the reasons I was asking you that is we've seen down here, we don't have many PUDs, but we have some subdivisions that we've noticed over the course of years to maximize profits. I mean, everybody's in the business of real estate development for, for profits, is that they went to a lot of, you can get more bang from a developer standpoint, building 40 townhouses instead of 10 houses. We've seen that happen a lot on, in subdivisions down here where they came in and they suppose to build single family, but no, they want to change the plan to townhouses or apartments because they can get more for, for the money. Did you guys do a lot of that in the Hartford County one, when we had good markets?
The, that, that plan didn't necessarily change for the product types that were within each village. There were four different distinct villages within the community of Riverside. And the multifamily were, were, were shown on a location from the get-go. And they ended up being multifamily. And there are apartments. There are condos. There's a nursing home. There are single families interspersed with, with townhouses. You know, and they're, they were, they were pretty well set out and shown on the concept plan that each section then went through the preliminary plan and then final, final development plan in there, the nomenclature of Hartford County at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Dixon, could you briefly tell the commission what the reason behind the request for the reduction in the total number of units?
Mr. Wyro, would you...
Could you please tell the commission the rationale behind the request for the reduction in the total number of units?
So, one of the steps that we've taken over the last two years that, that I've been involved in this project is we did a pretty detailed wetland delineation on the property and had that wetland delineation walked by representatives of the Maryland Department of Environment and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And we got a jurisdictional determination where we had some different impacts than what we initially thought we were gonna have. So, when taking the buffers and steep slopes and all those things into, into account, the, the, the development area tightened up a little bit. But we also had a little, we have, we have more guidance on housing types that our builder wants to develop on this property. And as we went in and created each of the, the nodes of development, you know, that's, that was the number of units that we got to, was the 1,122. So, that's, that's the reason for the reduction.
And, and that 1,100, that 1,122 units would include the placement of units on that 16 acre parcel, which is part of the amendment?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And so, was, was the available ground for building houses also reduced by the fact that the property had been previously mined?
Yes.
All right. And, but as part of that, was there an amenity created that the developer intends to use as part of the project?
Yes. We're creating a pretty significant community park.
All right. And it's around an existing lake, a lake that got developed as a result of the mining. Is that correct?
Correct. And we will have house sites looking out over the lake.
All right. And then, as a sort of a companion to the reduction of units and the, and the identification of the environmentally sensitive areas, was there a corresponding increase in the open space that the development would, would offer?
Yes.
And you've requested an affirmation of that increase in open space as part of the minor amendments, correct?
Yes, we have.
All right. And then you've also, you're also requesting a corresponding reduction in the phasing plan to an average of 100 homes per year?
Yes.
All right. Could you tell the commission a little bit about the nature of that request, please?
So, that was in conjunction with the builder who we are under contract with, Lennar Homes, some, someone, I think you'd heard that. They're, they're the largest builder in the country. And then them doing their projections based upon other communities they're currently working on here in St. Mary's County, their projection is that they should be able to sell 100 homes a year.
All right. And I'm, I'm assuming, per some of the questions we've heard from the commission tonight, that there are years in which you expect those numbers to vary. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Could you describe that a little bit for the commission?
Well, the vagaries of the market. The, the economy ebbs and flows and housing demand goes up, housing demand goes down. Just look at the last two years. During, during the COVID years, it was just so incredibly white-hot that everything sold out very, very quickly. Now, interest rates have risen a little bit. They're still pretty doggone good, but everybody got spoiled by 2% interest rates. So, then, then, then it slows a little. But on average, we're, we're, we anticipate 100 homes a year.
Now, is, is there a reason that you've selected a national builder like Lennar to do this, do this project?
Yes.
What could you describe for the commission what those reasons are?
Reputation, experience, and staying power. This is the fifth community I've developed in partnership with Lennar.
All right. And, and by, by staying power to address some, in response to some of the concerns raised previously by the commission, staying power was, you know, you're, you don't want a builder who's gonna walk away in the middle of the project. Is that your concern when you say?
That is absolutely the, the case.
All right. That would be all I'd have for Mr. Dixon, unless anybody's...
Just one question. With regard to the phasing of the 100, is that a combination of products that you move forward with or do you do, what I'm getting to, you do a certain number of single families, a certain number of town, how's that work?
Sir, it's, it's actually broken down even more than that.
Okay.
So, Lennar is planning to do two different lines of houses that are differentiated by price point.
Okay.
So, they're planning to do their American Dream series, which is a little more affordable, doesn't have, you know, all the, the bells and whistles of their signature series. And they've got 18 and 20-foot townhouse products and 40-foot single-family products. And then in the signature line, they have 20 and 22-foot townhouses and 50-foot wide single families. And we have striven to include as much as possible each of those components within each of our phases.
Phases.
So that, so that they're able to sell continuously in each one to help make the 100 home sales a year. Plus, the affordability and range of, of residents living in the community so that, you know, you don't have one area where it's just all the townhouses here and then the larger singles are over here. That it, it's pretty well interspersed.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Dixon, what's the anticipated price points of single family? You said there are two different types of the townhouses, of the, are the apartment houses rentals or are they like condos gonna be sold?
So, so let me, let me answer those, it's a couple of questions you've just asked. I don't, I can't really answer the pricing question because we're likely two years away, you know, from when they're really gonna be building and selling the houses. And we can't tell what the market's going to have done. The cost of building a home has gone up anywhere from 25 to 40% in the last three years since COVID. The building materials and everything has gone up. So, it, it's hard, you know, if I were to say the townhouses are gonna start at, you know, a number, that could be unrealistic in, 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 in two years.
I understand.
So, it's, it's very difficult to say that. The multifamily product that we're showing on the plans today are rentals. It's possible they might, we might do them as condos, but at this point, we think that it's a better fit for the market for them to be rentals.
Would you have an on-site manager?
They would be, it would be done by a professional apartment developer and management company.
Okay.
Either we would sell to a company that specializes in owning and managing apartments or we would partner with them. We've done, we've done both.
Do you have any agreements with the Housing Authority or anybody for low-income houses? For, you know, I don't want to use the term affordable because, you know, what's affordable?
We, we, we do not. It was not something that was, that was spelled out in the PUD.
Okay.
You know, we're trying to make the houses as affordable as possible, but it's, it's a challenge. Everything is just very, very expensive. And unless there are the incentives and the community is set up from the get-go, and this is, it'd be an awfully large product to do, you know, and affordable, you know, tax credit finance, that, that sort of, you know, project.
Okay.
It's not to say that some developer might say they, you know, they want to do a tax credit multifamily deal, you know, where the apartments are. You know, we, we have sold sites in the past for those type users.
You don't plan, you don't plan to have any stipulations in there about, I know some subdivisions, and I keep calling, I don't mean to call it a subdivision, it's a PUD, have the stipulations that only a certain percentage can be rentals versus a certain percentage have to be owned? I know some of that's determined by the loan type or it used to be in certain areas.
You're, you're very restricted in fair housing laws in writing caveats and covenants along those lines. Typically, when we write our set of underlying documents for our homeowner associations, we do require that any rental has to be at least 12 months. But that's rental of homes that were sold.
Sure.
So, it's like a, someone, someone who's working at the base and gets transferred. And the market's not great. They don't want to sell it. They want to rent it. You know, that's, that scenario. You, you, it just has to be for 12 months.
It's all legal, though.
That, that is absolutely legal.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Fazekis?
Hi, Mr. Dixon. Number of questions. So, the, the lake that was created by the mining in the past, is that considered part of the open space? Is that the new calculation?
Yes.
Okay. And is there community access to that in your plan or is it only accessible by the people who own property?
No, no, no. It's open space owned by the HOA and every resident has the same rights as someone backing up to it. The, the houses that would be, that would be adjacent to it, they're not riparian lots. They're just lots that have it as a view, just, just as a house that backs up the trees.
So, so there's a provision, I guess, for some kind of access point so that somebody doesn't have to trespass on private property to access the lake? Let's say I wanted to, I live in a townhouse and I want to go...
The access to the, the water will definitely not be cut off by, by, by units. And as, and as a matter of fact, it is our intention that the main community center and pool activity complex is gonna be overlooking the lake.
Wonderful.
So that it's, 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 it's a major, you know, selling feature of the attractiveness of that.
I'm very glad to hear that. So, my second question, actually, you just brought into is the community center. We had a, a multi-phase development, I think it was on Patuxent Beach Road, accessing the Solomon's Island Bridge there. And the development actually predated my time on this, on this committee. But when we were hearing a presentation from them, they were, I want to, I'm gonna guess phase five or phase, phase six of the development. And from phase one, part of their adequate community assets, they were saying they were gonna build this clubhouse. And now we were being asked to, to approve some townhouses and the community center wasn't, wasn't created. And I voted against that project. I think it's still passed, but I'm just, my concern is that, you know, I see these things and I know it's a multi-year phase and I wouldn't expect the very first person, you know, to, to occupy a, a, a home in this development would, would have this wonderful community center with just them as the only family deal, use it. But what, what are the intentions, you know, and in terms of, of phasing that in? I mean, are you gonna wait till the very last unit is sold before it's built or is it gonna be like?
No. So, first of all, you, you, you can't afford to build it upfront for, for several reasons. I know that this project cannot. We've got major infrastructure improvements that have to be done day one. We know, we've been told, as, as Mr. Wyro said, the first meeting I had on this, on this property was with Metcom to how are we gonna serve this property with water and sewer? And it became very apparent in the meeting with them that we have to build a water tower and we have to solve the sewer right upfront as part of the first phase. We're talking about a very significant infrastructure investment that we will have to creatively figure out how to finance. Adding a clubhouse and the carry cost of a clubhouse and pool to that is just, it, it's not, it's not prudent. It's not prudent. That amenity is gonna be owned by the HOA. And that amenity, the maintenance of it, not the construction, the construction cost is in our budget, but the ongoing maintenance of it, running a pool, all the furniture, the, the, the lifeguard, the heat and electric and the lights in the, in the, in the, in the clubhouse, that's all part of the HOA budget. And the HOA budget is gonna be based upon 1,122 units. And you can't saddle 50 initial buyers with that cost. So, you get, you, you need to get a critical mass of residents in there. And I can't sit here today and tell you what that number is, but it's gonna be hundreds.
Okay.
It's gonna be at least hundreds before that can, that can be absorbed. And it's possible that we phase it. And maybe we do the clubhouse and then the next year, when we sell so many more, we do the pool. But there are other amenities within the community. It's not just that. We're gonna have multiple tot lots. There's gonna be, you know, that open space. You know, I could see us having a dog park there and ball fields and, you know, really a great community gathering space that those type of amenities, while expensive, they're not the big-ticket item that a pool and clubhouse is. And that, you know, we, we ought to be able to bring some of that stuff online a little sooner.
Right.
Without saddling the HOA members with, with, with a significant expense.
That's understandable.
Can I interrupt you just a second?
Thank you.
In the, the, the PUD document itself is, delineates when parks need to be built.
Oh, okay.
And it also indicates that the community recreational facilities will be sequenced based on market absorption for the project. So, the topics were addressed in the, in the earlier, but they're gonna have to build some parks. some parks upfront. They can't wait to do it all.
That's basically what I wanted to hear.
Yes.
So speaking though of, of other amenities, so I live in, in a former PUD. It's, it's a Cedar Cove and there was about, I would say, just under a dozen different communities that was built over many years, again, before I even lived in the county. And I live at the very last one that was built, I believe, and they were townhouses. And, you know, each townhouse has a garage and they have a parking space, a pad for one vehicle. And there's the overflow parking. And so I calculated unscientifically, just went around, drove, driving around, did some, some basic back of the envelope calculations. And we got about 2.3 spaces for every unit in our development. And they, they was just built back in 2003, 2004-ish. Some parts might have been built a little earlier than that. And the problem we have and problems that our friends have living in Wildwood, the newer Wildwood developments, is that design of parking. And so people park in front of their house. They come, they, they were shift work, they come home at midnight, you know, there's no overflow parking, so they park away in front of their houses. Well, you got somebody on either side of the road who's doing that and now all of a sudden, it's really hard to, to navigate between these. It's very serpentine. And I just got a mid-sized pickup truck, I'm not, you know, a big SUV or anything like that. And, you know, I have trouble sometimes even getting into my driveway because of the way people park and such. So, so I was just going to ask, like, what is your parking space per unit calculation for the single houses, the townhouses and the multifamily? Because the county has gotten burned in the past, I think from other developers. And, and I, I don't want to see that moving forward this. This is, this is, I think, a quite needed community, Lexington Park. We're, we're, we're looking for housing big time in this, in this county. So what, you know, can you say off the top of your head or do you estimate what, what the, the parking per unit is going to be?
I don't, I, I can't answer that off the top of my head.
Would that be something that we discuss later when you guys talk about individual?
When we come in, when we come in with.
Okay, then it's fine, it's fine.
The phase plan. I do want to touch on the, the parallel parking comment, though. It, it is almost impossible to provide parallel parking within a townhouse street that has garages with driveways. Because there's no place to parallel park without blocking somebody's access to a driveway.
Oh, I know firsthand.
So, so what we do when we design them, those, those courts, those, those streets, is we create overflow parking area, areas in those spaces in between the townhouse decks. So let's say you got a stick of six townhouses and then another stick of six townhouses and there's 20 feet here and 20 feet there, you have 40 feet. We generally have room to get four pull-in parking spaces that don't block the road. Because even if you were to try to put parallel parking in, you either end up with an asphalt jungle because the road gets so wide and then it becomes questionable environmentally by having so much impervious surface area.
I understand.
And even if you do it and people park, they're still going to end up messing it up because they'll, they'll figure out a way to block the doggone road. So the, the, the challenge is number one, to try to get people to use their doggone garages for their cars, which is a very difficult human nature thing.
Well, especially, especially here where we have a lot of military people who are temporarily here for assignment for two years and then moving on. And essentially, they don't even fully unpack. And so most of our neighbors, you know, their garages are full of, 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 you know, satellite bins, you know, full of all their stuff, going from one house to the next house.
Yeah. But every, every townhouse will have a garage. Some of them will have two-car garages. So when you have a, a garage, you've got at least one parking space outside. When you have a two-car garage, you have two parking spaces outside. The single families, I'm fairly certain every one of their product is going to have a two, two-car garage, which means you have two spaces in the garage, two spaces out on the pad. Because everybody's got two cars. I mean, that's just a reality of life in, in suburban America, you know?
My wife and I, my wife and I have, we each have our own car and we have a small tow behind trailer. So that's in the garage and then one of our vehicles that gets home first gets in the driveway and the other one has to go to the overflow.
Especially when you're both working and you got to get to work and kids to school and all that, all that sort of stuff.
Sure, sure, sure.
So yes, that will, that will be addressed when we come in.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough.
It's like development plan.
The other, the other concern, and this kind of ties into my next question, I want to say two years ago, maybe, I don't know how long ago it was. We heard a, a development proposal on the roadway that will be, so, so people who live in this development, once it's fully developed, you're going to have access to Great Mills Road, you have access to Five. So there was a parcel close to Five that came upon us and they were going to build some townhouses with no garages and it's all going to be on-street parking or, you know, they were building the, the parking spaces for them. And a lot of people came out from the neighbors. So people that you're going to now be tying into when this development is full. And a lot of the neighbors were concerned about safety where Bay, I forget, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, Bay Ridge?
Bay Ridge.
Yeah, thank you. And Five met. And the project that we approved, the developer actually talked about widening the intersection for a left and right turn lane, leaving it and then also putting some kind of light because it's a very dark area once you get past the sheets in that intersection there. And, well, it never got built, okay? And so the, the concerns that the residents who will be your neighbors when this is built probably are still concerns that that's a very dangerous intersection in terms of, especially at nighttime with, with deer and, and just seeing the people, because you're going from 50 miles an hour down to that intersection and people, they, they don't stop to the very last minute, you know? So, so my concern is, because it's, it's off the property of the Stewart's grant proposal, but you're going to be diverting good 30, 40, 50% of the traffic down that, that boulevard to Route Five. How, how would that be addressed in, in this long-term?
Well, it was a requirement in the PUD that we tie in to Bay, Bay Ridge Avenue.
Okay.
And extend that as a boulevard on our site. It'll be built as a boulevard to tie into Carver, George, George Carver Road. That connection is not going to be made until one of the later phases because the intended phasing of the project is from top to bottom, which I guess is north to south, north to south, coming through the site and that node, where is it? Those, on the bottom of the page, those are the last sections of the, of the, of the project. And our intention would be to tie into Bay Ridge Avenue when those, when those sections are done. So we're talking five, six, seven years from now?
But at that point, though, would there be?
And I understand that and I, and I have to respectfully state that I hear often about existing traffic problems that aren't being fixed, that I'm looked at to fix because I'm the new guy on the block coming in to develop a project that's going to put cars on the road. And.
Fair enough, yeah.
That's, that, that's an intersection that Maryland State Highway Administration should be coming up with a solution on.
Yeah.
Because Route Five is a state road. And if there's, there's an issue on that road today, it really ought to be addressed. And if, when we're coming in with our site development plans and they say, you need to pony up and help and, you know, do something to help make this better, well, then it's incumbent, incumbent upon us to work with them to do that. But it's, it's not fair for us to have to fix a problem that's there today. If, if I make it worse, if I'm the one that creates the problem, I get it. That's, that, that's our responsibility.
Right. That's a fair enough answer, thank you. So, so another question, I got a couple more if the, the commission is, is okay with that, is that I sit on the NAACP's Housing Committee and two of the members actually brought up some, some concerns about, about the project. And the one was just about the, one's a realtor and the concerns is that we have people in our community, you know, who, who can't afford housing in the area. You know, they're renters, they want to buy, they want to invest, they've, they've, they've been here a long time and they want to be, you know, you know, a, a, a landowner in the community. You know, you already stated, or one of you guys has already stated that the, there's not going to be any kind of program, I guess, with, you know, the federal government for affordable housing and stuff. But as for the townhouses, you know, are there going to be different tiers? Are there going to be?
Yes, there absolutely are.
Okay, so you might be.
You have to remember, it's still going to be market rate.
Well, sure, sure. But you might have like an efficiency or a one-bedroom and you might have a three-bedroom and.
Well, not in the townhouses, the townhouses are going to be three, you know, three, three to four-bedroom townhouses.
Okay.
But as far as the apartments?
The multifamily, okay, yeah, yeah.
The multif, the multifamily? Well, I can tell you, I'm coming from this meeting, one of my takes coming from this is I'm going to reach out to the folks that we've done projects with previously that do affordable housing, that are very good in that sphere, they're, they're professionals. It's what they do in working with the various municipalities and the funding programs to create affordable housing. And see if that's, you know, if, if that makes sense for the multifamily component.
That sounds wonderful to me.
I'm not saying it's going to happen, I'm just saying it sounds like that would, that would be a good fit and appreciated.
I, I, I would suggest.
And if it makes sense for the community.
I would suggest it is a good fit because we did hear a, a development proposal six months ago, nine months ago, where initially it was, it was sold to us as, as affordable housing and then it turned to market rate housing. And then when it was actually presented to us as, as a commission, it was a luxury housing. And that was pretty disappointing to me, actually, that. So there is a need for that, so.
You sure that wasn't just marketing when they were calling it that?
Well, I think, I think, I think they're going to find, they're going to find out soon enough that maybe, you know, looking at Mr. Tire, you know, outside your bedroom windows, not going to be luxury, you know, condos and such. So actually that also addresses the issue that somebody else asked about from our committee about the, you know, incentives for teachers, police, you know, and essential medical workers because these are people who live in the community and are consistently complaining that, you know, they, they can't live. A lot of them work at MedStar there in Lenartown and they cannot afford housing in the county and they are commuting sometimes from Waldorf and things like that because the housing here in, in our county is just too unattainable. So I, I was very happy to see in your proposal that you do have the multifamily and, and hoping that maybe you guys can just keep that in mind as you guys develop that further and do some more market research for yourselves and just to see for sure about that. And there's one last thing I want to say and I'll give all my time from everybody else there. Lexington Park is, has been having some complaints about crime. Now, part of the problem, I think, is that our, our Sheriff's Department is underfunded. They have a really hard time keeping people retention and recruiting new people. In law enforcement these days, it's just, you know, across the board, it's kind of hard to do. So we have a nice brand-new substation there in Lexington Park that's not always occupied. But you guys will be now contributing to a lot of traffic up along Great Mills Road and through, through the park there. And I'm not really sure I want to ask you about that, but have you, have you thought about, you know, this increased density into an area where already there are some concerns about crime, concerns about pedestrian safety because parts of Great Mills Road is, is not well-lit and there've been some accidents and, and some, some thefts, you know, because it's not, certain parts of it are not safe. Has, has, has that kind of urban safety come into your plans?
In all honesty, I don't see a lot of pedestrian traffic coming from our community, leaving the community to go out to Great Mills Road. I could see them walking to, they definitely would be walking to the schools. They would be walking to the retail center, the shopping. But if, if there's an issue of pedestrian challenge on Great Mills Road, it's much more than just the, the limited frontage that our property holds on Great Mills Road. And if there are frontage improvements that are required on, on our property there that is along the lines of what you'd like to see the future on Great Mills Road, you know, that will be something that'll be considered when we come in for the site development plan.
Yeah, I would definitely keep that on your, on your back burner thinking about when you guys come again for the individual projects, assuming that, you know, things go favorably tonight. You know, again, where I live, it was a PUD as far as I know. And there are some lower income or just apartments, I would say, where sometimes the, the children who don't own cars are actually walking up to Hermanville Road on, on 235. And it's not well-lit intersection, I've always talked to Public Works about that and we're trying to address that issue. But people do walk and.
Well, I, I could see as, when we go in for our, you know, as we go in for our, our first phase, second, whatever it is, when there are intersection improvements that SHA might suggest that we make to Great Mills and George Carver, you know, pedestrian crossing could be. But you got to remember that there has to be someplace to go. You know, is it tying into a sidewalk on the other side? You know, does Westbury Road, I don't know, does it have sidewalks, you know, coming up to that point? Is there something that we could then connect to that's on the other side or out on Great Mills Road?
And then just very last thing, very quickly. So I assume just because of your design, because you are so close to the schools, that there will be some bike or pedestrian passer that's, that, that children can walk to the schools that are?
Well, we're, we will have sidewalks throughout the entire community.
Okay.
And we abut both of those schools. So, you know, I don't think that access to the schools is going to be.
I just wouldn't want to see a child have to go all the way up to Great Mills Road then go back into the school if there's other, you know, means to give them a safer and closer access to, to their schools.
We, we can certainly work with the school on coming up with a plan of how to do, how to.
That was a recommendation from Kim Howe, was walkways to the schools.
Yeah, yeah, from the schools, yes. That's all, Mr. Dixon, thank you very much.
Mr. Dixon, I won't keep you long because I have a lot of questions, but I'll wait for the concept plan to ask all of them. But one of them that's a sticking point for me is the, you explained the reduced parallel parking, but I don't know. And I understand you said if there's extra space, you're going to, if there's 20 feet here and 20 feet there, you're going to put room for some cars. But to go along with the reduced parking, on page 26 of the PUD document, it, it states that road standards will be less than the county minimum standards. What does that mean? And the reason I ask that now, since the amendment takes into effect some parallel parking doing away with, if we're already making roads more narrow, and I'm not saying that's what that, that statement means, but it says they're not going to meet county standards. Just if, if they're more narrow, people are going to park there, whether you make them wide enough for on-street parking or not. I mean, if you drive through Wildwood, go through every townhouse, little community that they have in Wildwood and, and it's, it's, it's just staggered. You're not supposed to park there, but we have no enforcement down here that, that does anything about it. So it, it's, it's just a, a reality that I think needs to be addressed now. And I know you can't stop lawbreakers and, and people doing things.
Well, we can certainly sign the roads, no parking. We can certainly paint curbs red, call them fire lanes so that it is much easier to enforce. Because when a car is parked there and you take a snapshot of it and you send it to the Sheriff's Department and have them come out, all they have to do is a couple of enforcement actions and all of a sudden, that might, that might get reduced.
And that's a good idea.
And happening.
The reason I ask is I just wanted an explanation of that statement in the PUD about the county standards. Somebody sent that to us in something, I don't know what it was in.
Often, often.
I didn't read the whole PUD document because it was so many pages.
Often, oftentimes in a PUD or other, like a mixed-use development of other overload, overlay districts, they will allow for relaxation of. overlay districts, they will allow for relaxation of hard and firm road section guidelines, because their roads, road sections are generally driven by engineers, and it's ideal to have 60 feet, or 40 feet, or 50 feet, or whatever it is, and creative land use is driven by planners. And planners like to have a little better sense of feel, sense of place, and wide swaths of asphalt don't engender that sense of feel. And a PUD document, just like mixed-use documents and other overlays, are more of a planning tool than necessarily an engineering tool. But that's also part of the reason why Mr. Wyro pointed out, that we will be coming in for development plans, site development plans, for each of the phases as we're coming through, and those will be addressed, that point will be addressed, as we come in with each one.
Yeah, but you won't be coming to us, so what I'm asking for is clarification of what that means in that-
I can't sit here today and tell you what that means. I think it means that if, if the Collector Road, or Arterial Road, or whatever they signify one of, you know, one of the roads in here, if it is a really substantial road section that's required there, and it makes common sense that it doesn't need to be that, or maybe it's narrower and needs to be wider, that you have the flexibility to be able to do so without having a hard and fast rule coming from the code.
But I'll say the last thing on it, the problem I have with that is, I think Mr. Wyro and Mr. Howser both said the same thing, that in their speaking, that if there is an issue between the PUD document and the CZO or any rule, the PUD document takes effect.
Yes, it does.
So the county could say, we want you to put in 18-foot roads, oh, hey, wait a minute, our thing says we don't have to meet county standards, so we don't want to put that in. That's what I, and reducing the parking, and with the option, leading it up to the developer of what they want to do to them, I'm not talking about the Boulevard, I'm talking about all the other roads where-
Yeah.
Trash trucks have to get deliveries, emergency vehicles.
But, but the planning administrator still has to approve our plan, and they will-
Right?
And that's the way it's written. And they will be, they will be able to make that call, and they're going to lean on staff, and they're going to lean on comments, that they're going to get from every single department within St. Mary's County Government.
I just think it's a, it's a bad statement in the PUD. I don't see how anybody would have ever approved that PUD, saying that you have the right to put in less than county standards, especially for roads, but that, I don't know exactly what it says, but there was a reference in something that we had about something could be less than county standards, and I think-
On page 26.
Okay.
It's under local roads, frontage, and cul-de-sacs, and it's limited to those particular roads only, not roads throughout the project. So the Collector Road is still going to have to be built to county standards, but for a sense of community, it's, and it's primarily, it reads like it's primarily directed toward single-family homes as opposed to others, so it specifically says, since the overall traffic volumes on these roads are very low, proposed waving, paving widths are being kept to a minimum. The adoption of proposed road standards, which are less than current county minimum standards, will benefit the community by maintaining the visual integrity within the PUD, and by saving development costs in their prime, providing a more affordable product. So it was limited to a specific condition, it was not a condition that you don't have to abide by road standards throughout the entirety of the project.
If I may, just to, not going to steal the microphone from Mr. Wyra on the moment, or budge into the applicant's presentation time, but Mr. Van Kirk, the Stewart's Grant roadway design standards can be found on page 67. There's a comparison on the left-hand table that shows what the county road standards, the road ordinance standards were at the time, right side is what the standards will be in Stewart's Grant, and they talk through what they are for major collectors, cul-de-sacs, et cetera, it's about four or five pages worth-
Okay.
On page 67.
And in fact, I'd point out that the travel lanes for the roadway, in some instances, are broader than what the county standard provides. There's, for instance, with the road width, the, on the major collector, instead of the 30 feet that the county standard provided, provided for 32.
Okay.
And I think in planning, in planning, a lot of times, narrow roads have a lot to do with traffic calming. Narrow roads typically, people have a sense about driving more slowly, and they are, the roadways, the sidewalks are a bit more intimate. But that said, you really can't, it's really hard to police bad behavior anyplace, you really can't. I've got one other thing. Earlier this evening, I mentioned that some years ago, 2011, the Chamber of Commerce panelled a workforce housing task force. It was about this time, right after the census came out. It's a very complete informational document. I didn't author the document, and so it's not mine to give, but I would like for you to consider, perhaps, if I can find out or get permission from the people that authored that document, if they would consider updating it with current information, current figures, and perhaps sending you, sending you the document, just informational, it's not something that's going to, you know, be required of you guys, but what it does, and there's any number of tables and things, and everybody talks about annual household salaries as a percentage, and it breaks it down to hourly wages, and it'll give you an idea about our county, it'll give you an idea about where we live and what the ability of people to pay, because the document describes workforce housing, it gives an, actually, a definition, rather than just affordable housing, because affordable really just means what a household can afford. It doesn't, it doesn't describe the type of housing that actually would be constructed. So I'll reach out to the powers-to-be, some of the folks that constructed that document are in the room tonight, but if I can get permission from them, maybe to share it with you, it would be, it would be informational, at least, you know, moving forward for the developer.
Sure, thank you.
Could I address one, and I'm going to bring Ms. Murray up to talk to some greater, in greater detail, to address the, put some finishing touches on the parallel, but Mr. Fizikis, in response to you, there is a requirement that the parking requirements will be in accordance with Section 56 and Section 57 of the Code, if that makes a difference to you. And with respect to your concerns expressed about the intersection of Bay Ridge and-
Five.
Five. State Highway, I understand, has a capital project in its currently projected, and I forget when the year is, but it's, but it's in the near term to address some of the problems along Route 5. We have had some contact with DPW about some concerns that folks coming down 5 north to, toward Great Mills have got a tendency to jump over in that right turn lane and go speeding through, so he's indicated that, he being, the head of Public Works, has indicated that when the time comes for us to present a site plan, that he's going to have a conversation with us about some sort of traffic device on the shoulder, which prevents people from cutting through and putting the people coming out of Bay Ridge at jeopardy. So we know that there are conversations about safety issues down there coming.
Thank you. So reducing the parallel parking requirement, which, I come from the big city, and no one likes parallel parking. But basically, but if we were to vote in favour of this minor amendment, it wouldn't pre, you know, it wouldn't give you free rein, you'd still be bound by the county's other parking requirements.
That's, that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And we've got to meet sort of minimum standards by, by number of residents versus parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera, so it's not carte blanche, and as indicated earlier, it's, we don't want, they don't want parallel parking on a, on a major collector road.
Oh, no, no, no.
So, so they're not eliminating it everywhere, and in fact, the areas in which parallel parking is referenced in the, in the PUD document, which we are asking you to amend, is limited to very specific, you know, the green area, some areas near the apartments, and I think one other. So it's just those discrete areas where we're asking the requirement to remove, because those are the only areas where there's a specific requirement that we provide it, other than just provided in the ordinance itself.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My turn to have this. Please, is it, I'll shift to the north end of this. One thing that kind of pops up is you're up against a rifle range, a private rifle range, Sanders Lake. Have you all had discussions with them as to maybe what sort of fencing, barriers, or whatever, to keep the, you know, the six-year-old from wandering into the woods over into the rifle range?
I have not had any conversations-
I'm just saying, it's one of those things, is you develop it, and you come up with fencing and things, just be aware that that is a private, and the county only has two ranges. One is one down south of the base, and then you have this one at Sanders Lake. So we would hate to see, because of development, push out one of the legitimate areas for people to practice, okay? And another area that's brought up by the base, and also safety concerns and correspondence, is lighting, and recognizing that you do have, you're coming across there, and they, hopefully, that the lighting will be directed downward because of the aircraft coming across as far as night traffic. And that's one area that was recommended from the naval base. The other thing is, when you talk about safety, darkness is not usually considered part of that, so I'm assuming, or my question to you, it really is, what sort of lighting are you doing for the neighborhoods?
There'll be streetlights.
Just normal streetlights, but you'll have plenty of them?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's the secret, because, you know, when we go to Bay Ridge, there's only one traffic light at the very end where you all will join in, and then there's one clear at the other end, so the developer there got away with murder, okay? So I'm just saying-
No, we will have streetlights throughout, you know, the Boulevard and all the residential streets.
And remember that when kids go to school, even if you have walking paths, be aware that when you have the transition, like we just went through, there are times that either early morning or the 4 o'clock timeframe, it's darkness as far as kids coming home from school. So think about your walking paths to and from the schools also being well-lit, okay? From a safety perspective. Essentially, I'll, I think you've killed everything over on that side.
All you've got to do is raise your hand. Mr. Wyra, before we go to the next speaker, can we take a short recess?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Take a five-minute or so recess. Take a five-minute or so recess.
All right. Okay. Hold on a second.
You ready to go?
Okay, we'll bring the meeting back into order. Go ahead, Mr. Wyer.
This is Allison Murray, and I'll let her tell you all a little bit about herself and what she does.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Allison Murray. I work for Reliable Real Estate Services with John Dixon. And I have been working on this project since, for the last two years, since John and I took, or taken a deeper look into it, starting with the MEPCOM conversations.
All right. And this is the reason why we, so you're an engineer by trade, is that correct?
Yes. I was a civil engineer and worked for, a consultant for 10 and 1/2 years before. As they say, going to the dark side.
All right. And so, you know, and this is why we leave the details to the people who know what they're talking about. You've asked us about the roads and design standards. Ms. Murray, why don't you tell the committee what you told me during the break about the design of the roads?
Yes. So to clarify and to address some of your concerns, all of the roads that we have proposed throughout the community are actually to county standards. Throughout the residential community, all of the road sections, and they're actually shown on the concept plan with section details and reference which county standards they're meeting.
All right. And what impact, if any, does widening some of these roadways to county standards have on the ability to provide for parallel parking?
So to further the conversation, there is no parallel parking proposed throughout the residential community as they are meeting all county standards, and there is no parallel parking proposed in those. Our concerns with doing that are you expand the roads, you expand the environmental impacts as everything widens. It also becomes a maintenance concern for the county later. As far as the PUD allows, we were looking at it in more detail. The parallel parking is currently really more concerned with the commercial area and the multifamily, which hasn't been designed yet. Ideally, we would not have it there. It's just not, it's not the best form of parking, both from a ease of using it as well as maintenance, and the front-end parking is much easier for people to utilize. We do still, however, want to propose visitor parking, overflow parking, but they would be the straight-in in various areas to better utilize the different sections.
And just so the commission is aware of the reference she's referring to, the section she referred to is on-street parking on page 26, which mandates parallel parking on public streets associated with the neighborhood center, Stuart's Green, and multifamily housing. So that's the section that we're asking for relief from in the minor amendment tonight. And as Ms. Murray has indicated, and she'll correct me if I'm wrong, with respect to the neighborhood center and Stuart's Green, which are primarily commercial in nature, it'll be pull-in parking, which from a capacity standpoint is going to be much more better than parallel and safer, given the number of people that's going in. And then with respect to the multifamily, their multifamily housing, there may be some limited instances of parallel parking. We just don't want to be required to do it, and most of those units are going to be pull-in parking anyway, which is more efficient than trying to parallel park people. It's a more efficient use of space. So have I accurately stated that, Ms. Murray?
Yes.
All right. And that would be the last of our witnesses for this as part of the hearing, unless you have any questions of Ms. Murray.
So I also come from the dark side. I was an engineer before, I was a planner. But yeah, my concerns about the reduction in the parallel parking was that it wasn't a reduction in parking, period. You're just basically saying that, you know, I don't know when that rule was written. It could have been done in the '90s, it could have been done in the '70s, I don't know. But most people are now more familiar, at least in this area, with the front-end parking. So to take away a spot from the roadway, especially for an arterial collector, to going into, you know, a lower speed and lower density roadway, does make a lot more sense for safety and such. You're not going to save anything in terms of runoff to the bay because a spot's going to be a spot. So if it's a 10-foot-by-20-foot spot that's parallel, or a 10-foot-by-20-foot spot, you know, in overflow parking, it's still going to be the same number of impervious surfaces for each spot. So my concern just was basically that this request was not asking for a reduction in parking, just because I'm a personal witness from my family and from our friends on just how, when there's not enough parking in some of these developments in St. Mary's County, the detriment it is to the community and to the public safety.
Absolutely. We're not trying to reduce parking, just.
I'm glad to hear that.
Change the style.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
You're the lucky one tonight.
So that would conclude our presentation on the minor PUD amendments. We've got the one acre in the middle of one piece from our perspective makes a great deal of sense to incorporate because otherwise it's just a sort of one-acre island in the middle of something that's already been approved as a PUD. As I indicated in my opening remarks, the others three, the reduction in the units, the corresponding reduction in the phasing, and an increase in open space, from my perspective, are to the betterment of this project. And quite frankly, as I indicated earlier, I'm not sure it would require approval, this is commissioned anyway, but out of an excess of caution, we decided to make the application. And then with you, now hopefully you understand in greater detail the reason for the request for the amendment to the parallel parking provision, and our request would be limited to what we've described here tonight, which would be primarily, as I indicated, to the provision on page 26, subpart room 904. And with that done, unless you have any further questions.
Anybody have any further questions? Okay, before we move into deliberation on this part of it, I remind everybody in the audience tonight that this is a discussion item on this PUD revision. This is not, this part is not open for public testimony. Because of the hour that we're getting into, we never go past, or I won't say never, we seldom go past the 10 o'clock hour. As everybody has witnessed tonight, the concept plan will be harder than it was tonight. So it, we won't be starting that tonight, just due to the applicant wanting to start on an early evening keel, and we will proceed from there. During that part of it, during the PUD hearing for Stuart's grant, we will have public testimony for that then, you know, as part of that hearing. But tonight, it's just open for deliberation from the board, and we'll make a decision just on these revisions to the PUD item. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
You've got 50 people sitting in here who've been waiting for three hours to say something. It's not right.
Well, it's...
Joe, maybe it's beneficial for them to hear something about the project. And I just had that discussion just a moment ago. And we struggle with this all the time, when it comes to this. People want to hear about the project, not, they just don't come to talk. I mean, you may come to talk, but by and large, a lot of people like to know what the hell's going on. And so, we try to give them that opportunity. That's why. I mean, it may be onerous to you, but that's the thinking that's behind it.
Do you have a plan, Commissioner?
I understand you have.
Okay. I can't have, excuse me. Okay, Mr. Anderson, I understand. But we don't go back and forth in between here. This is a standard operating procedure that we do during this. As you can understand, some people did come here to learn about this project, and when we'd come back to concept, they will even have probably more questions to ask the applicant and the board at that time for that. This is standard operating procedure. We're not up here to, you think the last thing I want to do tonight is to walk through this crowd and to say, you know, "I did this on purpose, because we really didn't want to hear from you. We just snookered you out."
That's not...
That is not what I sit up here for. It's not what I volunteered for. It's not the practice of this board of what we try to do. This is the same thing we do week in and week out, to try to help the county, to do whatever we can to better it. Some people don't agree. You can't always make everybody happy, but we do the best we possibly can. I never, I would never, the last, I live in this community just like you. I go to the same stores, I see the same people, I know people in these audiences here. We're not trying to snooker anybody out of it, or pull something over their head. By them sitting through this hearing tonight, I hope they got something out of it, and they'll be ready for the next one. And that's all we're going to say on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Open it back up to the board for deliberations. Anybody want to speak? I mean, we got pretty much our questions answered, you know, the big three or four items that were coming before us.
I think it was, I think it was a good, the last speaker, no, I apologize, I can't remember her name, I'm sorry.
The lucky one?
Allison Murray.
Ms. Murray. She stated that all the roads would be up to county standards, and that helps me with the fact of reducing the parking, because if you were making them more narrow, I mean, I sell real estate myself, as I know they do. So, I can tell you, people's going to parallel park, even though there's not parallel parking spots, in townhouse subdivisions, it's just a simple, you know, it happens, I could take you to 10 of them right now, and cars are weaved all on the side of the road, in between all the driveways. It's going to happen, but at least with the roads being the proper width, it was, you know, I say you can't, normal citizens can't police everybody, so, that's all I'll say. But I'm...
Which is why I should have deferred to the expert on the front end on that question.
Mr. Physikus.
I had a lot of concerns on the project, questions, concerns, and I think the discussion today was very fruitful. You know, we have a lot of things now on the public record where I had some lack of clarity, and things have been clarified for me. Ms. Murray's testimony actually clearly brought it over the edge for me in terms that, you know, I was really concerned about reducing parking, just from my own community, my own experiences. So, I think that a lot of information's been presented just to us as a board and to the public, and, yeah, I'm much more comfortable now than I was before the being started, so...
So, I'm happy, I mean, with what was presented tonight. I thought it was informational, and I said, I'll say this again, I appreciate every single person in this room coming out here tonight. And while it may, while it may, to some, seem like a waste of time, it's not. You have an opportunity to listen to the folks that are going to build this, you have an opportunity to listen to us, me, talk about issues that may or may not be of interest to you. But the fact of the matter is, this is why we do this, and all of us take what we do very seriously. I mean, we spend an enormous amount of time. This stack of stuff on my, on this desk here, I have three times more of that on my desk at home. It takes hours to go through and wade through all of these things, and you folks don't have the benefit of any of that, really, unless you come here or watch it on TV. And so, again, I appreciate the fact that you folks took the time to come. I also appreciate the fact that all of you are still here. You could have left, but you didn't. And so, again, I thank you, and I think that, I think that the developer did a good job tonight in the presentation, so...
My turn. I'm after that crayon again. Mr. Hauser, if you could answer me a question. If we go through and we do the minor tonight, okay? And it comes back to us as a development plan at the next one, correct?
Walk me through that, because if we do the minor, the minor amendment to the development plan tonight, those changes would take effect now, that, I mean, we wouldn't write up a new development book, but the changes that you're voting on, asking for are the development plan going forward.
Okay.
Those are the standards that you judge the concept site plan by.
So, the concept site plan will have the development plan in it, which will come back to us? So, what authority do we have to change anything in the concept plan?
I'm trying...
I'm trying to sharpen that crayon as best I can.
I understand you.
Am I confusing?
Yeah, you're confusing.
I am confusing.
I mean, we're going to do the minor PUD amendment right now, either way it goes, and then, at the next meeting, this one will come back as the minor, as the concept site plan approval or disapproval. Even though there's two sides, Mr. Wyro, Mr. Hauser, say, yes, we need it, one says we don't need it. We'll determine that. We'll still have the, we're going to have the meeting, I would assume, we will vote on that at the next meeting. It'll be just like a public hearing.
But we're not voting on the concept site plan?
Correct. Your vote, it seems like you're headed towards a vote on the amendment only.
Correct.
Tonight.
That's where I'm getting confused.
Right.
Tonight is just the amendment to change these things on the screen.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Ms. Summers, do you have anything?
No.
No. Mr. Brown. Okay. And by the way, when Merle was talking about, you know, we get stacks of information that we have to go through and all that paper-wise, you can go on Board Docs, that is open to the public. Every piece of paper that we get is on Board Docs. The only time, like, we had some things happen really late this afternoon, and everything was, you know, Mr. Hauser did an excellent job on getting everything he could to us in a timely fashion. Sometimes things come late, and we let you all know that, but everything that we get is on Board Docs. Is it fun to look through? Well, you try it out and let me know what you think later. But it is all out there, and, you know, if you have a question, you can call, log them, and they will, they will answer your question, you know, if at all possible to do that. It's, it'll open your eyes when you look at that stuff. All right. Having heard everybody, is there a way we want to go? Is there a motion? Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. In a matter of minor planned unit development PUD amendment text 22-0270, Stuart's Grant PUD, having accepted the information provided by the applicant and the staff report, and having made a finding that the objectives of section 44.4.4.B, the comprehensive zoning ordinance, have been met, and noting that the referenced project has met all requirements for approval, I move that this minor PUD amendment to reduce the number of dwelling units to 1,126 units, eliminate the parallel parking, and add 39, and add parcels 39 and 75 to the PUD be approved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Let me get my little book. Okay. I'll do roll call vote on this. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Physikus?
Aye.
Mr. Van Kirk?
Aye.
Ms. Summers?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Sinclair?
Aye.
And I'll also vote aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Step one, okay. Mr. Hauser, could you come up in a second, just ask you a question? Do I need to open up the Stuart Grant PUD public hearing and to, by opening that, to pick a date certain for the applicant, or can I just, does it, I guess, if I don't do that, do they have to re-advertise for that date?
Now, you don't need to open up for public here tonight, and again, just to reiterate what everybody says, this, from time to time, happens. The planning commission had a lot of questions asked, there was a lot of information for me to share, for Mr. Wyro to share, that the planning commission wanted in addition to what we planned on sharing. That takes time. This is certainly not the only time where folks showed up for public comment, and we just have had to continue it, because the thorough job you all wanted to do is what the demand was. I'll remind folks that we have to continue to a date certain, so all you need to do, Mr. Thompson, is, we have to identify a date and time to continue this, too. I think Ms. Jenkins has the dates handy. Ask Mr. Wyro if that'll work for them and suits their schedule, so we know that won't be an issue, too. Then we announce the time, and anybody who received notice tonight, welcome to come to that date and show up. Can also, in the interim, the ability to submit written comments is always there as well, up until, you know, usually we can get a comment on Board Docs and to the developer and in the record if it's sent just a few hours before the hearing. So, that option remains open to people as well.
Okay. Mr. Wyro, the first date that we have open is April 17th. After that, we have May 1st, followed by May 15th. Would you like to quickly discuss with your team to see what...
Notice I'm writing this one down.
They're going to send you an email, John?
Well, he's going to be here anyway.
All are tough, don't you?
First quarter there, behind by three. Howard turned it early tonight. See, my women's team is playing right now.
Okay. So, the next hearing will be on April 17th, 6:30 in this room. We will, depending upon how long that goes that night, I mean, the public testimony, we will at all, we will try our hardest to get to you all that night. I mean, you have to remember, we're going through all this again. So, we stopping tonight at 9:30 now, we got a lot of our questions answered tonight, so I don't anticipate a lot of those questions coming back, but I can't, I'm not a mind reader, that magic eight ball does not tell me exactly what to do.
We'd say that.
You understand what went on tonight? You, I hope, understand what might happen at the next hearing. I hope to hear from everyone in here that wanted to speak tonight.
Mr. Chairman, is that April 17th?
That is April 17th. Be there or be square. Okay. 6:30. Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Oh, Mr. Evans?
No. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Sinclair. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.